To order. Dr. Washer, you will have, you're in charge of the Pledge of Allegiance and the little videotape with with the National Anthem. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Nava, thank you. We have a special treat this evening. All of our high schools, as you know, are putting together videos to celebrate their seniors. We have a clip for you tonight from Middle College High School. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Chandler Clark. And if you could please remain standing for the National Anthem by Nikaila Loza.
Good evening. My name is Chandler Clark, and it has been my privilege to serve as your ASB Vice President for Middle College High School. Will you please stand and join me in the flag salute? Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now at this time to sing our National Anthem, the lovely Ms. Nikaila Loza.
Thank you, Dr. Washer, for getting the tape for us as a beautiful, beautiful singer. And thank you for the Pledge of Allegiance from Middle College. Are we all there?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nava.
Okay, let's have a report from closed session. George Neely motioned and Ms. McFarland second. And the board voted to approve the settlement agreement of OAH case number 2020021088 by the following vote of four to three. The known votes were Mr. Hebertly, Mr. Freitas, and Mr. Porter. That is all I have to report from closed session. Okay, we have some recognitions. It's really trying times that we are in this pandemic, but it's on. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to acknowledge the 2019-2020 Student Representatives to the Board. I understand we have two present Aida Edwards from Toki High School. Hello, Aida.
Hi, how are you?
Very good, thank you. Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for letting me attend. I'm very happy to be here.
Very good. Okay, and then we have Trinity Escorpiso from Ramo McNair High School. Trinity, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you for allowing me to attend. I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you, Trinity. And I'm going to acknowledge Dylan Rogers from Lodi High. Is he in attendance? Okay, and Daniel Underman from Bear Creek High School. Well, first of all, let me thank you very much for being the leaders of your high schools and keeping the board informed of all the activities and all the things that happened at your high school. And I appreciate all of it. I wish we were in a viewing mode because it's very difficult since this pandemic has happened. It's very difficult, you know, to get the human element involved. And I'm actually would like to be right there congratulating you on the podium and having something to say to you. But I will, I will appreciate on the board, a part of the board to thank you for your leadership and your attendance to all our meetings when we could attend. I have only a couple of questions, maybe one. We'll start with Aida Toki High. Could you give us a little bit of experiences on the distance learning?
Yes, of course. For me, I've mainly had just Google Classroom assignments. I had a few Zoom calls with some of my teachers. Some of them were for like my, for my AP Physics class. We had a Zoom call to help us get ready for our AP test, which we did take online. So that was one of them. And then the other one, my teacher, my creative writing teacher wanted to check in with us. It was really nice. Then, other than that, it was really helpful because we just had assignments and we can do them. And if we need help, we can email our teachers or they had a video call available. So it was relatively accessible.
Very good. Thank you, Aida. Trinity from McNair. Same question.
Same for me. We were kind of mostly on Google Classroom. For my statistics class, I know we had a Zoom every day to review the homework from the previous day. And then for my other class astronomy, it was more straightforward. We kind of just had assignments posted on Google Classroom and we just turned them in. Another thing I would like to mention is that Dylan from Lodi is also here, but he, I don't know if his technology is working right. But Dylan is here, so.
Oh, Dylan is here. Awesome, Dylan. Rogers, Dylan? Are you there?
Dylan, please unmute your mic.
Hi, Mr. Nava. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Welcome, Dylan. And thank you. Thank you for your attendance. I asked a question earlier on Trinity and Aida as to your experiences with distance learning.
Okay, well, thank you for allowing me to be here as well. And I'd have to agree with Trinity. I've been doing, there's been a lot of stuff on Google Classroom and then I've been doing Zoom with a couple of my classes, mostly student government. And we've been kind of organizing things around school. We've been doing contests on Twitter that have been posting the seniors' baby pictures and other people can comment. And then we've been delivering prizes and stuff like that. But for most part, yeah, that's been about it.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you for your explanation on that. And thank you for your leadership at Lodi High School. Yeah, Daniel, get to our phones at all? Daniel Underman? You didn't. Anyway, thanks again on behalf of the Board of Education. Congratulations. And Dr. Washer, you have their name tags that we're going to give our students?
Absolutely, we will get them to them.
Very good. Thanks again. If you would like to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you're welcome. If not, we will see you hopefully at graduation in August.
Mr. President.
This is some positive thinking, okay? Very positive thinking. I think that the due date would be sometime in August. Is that right, Dr. Washer?
That is correct. We had said by August 7th, if we are permitted to do so.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, hopefully. Yes, Mr. Freitas.
I'd like to also thank our student representatives. These are very challenging times and we appreciate you having us at our meetings. You give us great insight to what's going on in the campus and it really makes a difference. Maybe you could tell us a little bit about what next year looks like for you, Aida, Trinity, and Dylan? If you're going on to school or work and how's that process is going?
Aida?
Hi, okay, so for me, I was admitted into UC Davis University. I will be attending there for college after this or next fall or this fall. So yeah, I'm really excited about that. My major will be animal science and management.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Trinity? Trinity?
So I'll be going to CSU Fullerton this fall. I'll be majoring in communications with a concentration in advertising. The CSU announced that we'll be going online for Fall 2020, so I don't know how that's really going to go. But I will also be part of their honors program.
Congratulations. Dylan?
Yeah, so I've been accepted and I've committed to University of Nevada Reno. And I'm still going back and forth depending on, you know, all the virus and stuff like that because they're not sure if they're going to be doing online. So if they don't end up doing online, they'll be majoring in communications as well at Delta for a year and then trying to go back the next year.
Fantastic. Well, whatever you guys do, always find something that helps people. Enjoy what you're doing. Then it'll never be a day of work. And be sure to drop us a line once in a while and let us know how you're doing. And if there's anything the board can ever do to help you all out, please let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. Anybody else on the board? Okay, then we will continue on with our superintendent's report. Dr. Washer?
Thank you, Mr. Nava, members of the board. I want to mention that we have a couple of teams of teachers who have received a pretty nice honor. The Intrepid Philanthropic Foundation puts out grants and awards for teams of teachers to do professional development projects. And this year, there were 24 teams accepted who received funds for their projects. And we have two of those 24, one from Lodi High School and one team from Toki High School. So I want to congratulate those high school teams for getting this award and getting some funds for their own professional learning. And that's very exciting. I want to give the rest of my time, under my report, to Mr. Khan. As you know, the governor's May revision of the budget has come out. Today was the School Services presentation about the May revise. So I'd like Mr. Khan to share some of the highlights. We will give a more in-depth presentation later, but just want to give a flavor of what we heard today and what the May revise contains. So, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Dr. Washer, President Nava, members of the board. Today was a rather sobering experience. I'm sure it's an understatement to say none of us have ever really experienced anything like this before. I'll just sort of go through the School Services Pocket Budget headers to review what was said today. First, of course, the most important is the minimum guaranteed of Prop 98. We learned today the May revise would calculate to a drop of $4.2 billion in the current year of the minimum guarantee and a drop of $13.5 billion in the budget year 2021. What that would mean to the Lodi Unified School District is a drop in revenue equal to all of the Fund 01 reserves currently posted in the board's second interim. Cost of living adjustments, there have been no nominal cuts to anything in the 1920 year. There will be a big deferral that of the June apportionment, which will be paid in July, but semantically, there won't be any cuts to 1920. The governor does recognize the 2021 school year's COLA of 231, but he suspended it. He did not mention the 2122 COLA, as far as I know. So LCFF, what this will look like to Lodi Unified is roughly an 8% reduction per year 2021-2122. In LCFF funding, the deferrals for 1920, that is the current year, the year we're in, statewide will be $1.9 billion worth of LCFF funding. That will either be all or a good portion of our entire June apportionment. And then amazingly enough, 5.3 billion in deferrals in the 2122 school year. What that looks like is, at the end of the 2021 school year, is the entire last quarter of school, April, May, and June, being deferred to sometime in the 2122 school year. There are some bright spots. Calsters will be reduced. Calpers will be reduced for a two-year period, roughly 2%. So that's helpful. And also, the governor reverberized his commitment to Special Ed SELPA funding from $557 per 88 to $645, somewhere in the neighborhood of $90. More than SELPAs are receiving now that could translate into a SELPA increase of about $2.8 million. The presentation did discuss some of the CARES plan, but there's still much to be learned about that. Our own benefits, the applications for those benefits aren't even available at this point. I would like to mention that one of the scariest things I saw today, and certainly not the largest, but a very impactful cut was a 50% reduction to some of the more important categoricals in the Lodi Unified School District, that being the After School Program ACES and the CTEC Grant, the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant, as well as the California Partnerships and also the Strong Workforce Grant. There were cuts, outright cuts to child, early childhood and preschool as well. There was really unbalanced, no good news today, and I'm sorry to report it, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Any questions for Dr. Khan?
Mr. Nava, this isn't an agenda item, so we can't deliberate. If you have clarifying questions, you can ask clarifying questions.
That's correct. Thank you. All right. Anything else, Dr. Washer?
No, just that we will give you more information as we learn more information. This is fairly new, as you know. School Service is just coming out today. So we will keep you apprised as we learn more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have comments from the public. A 20-minute time period has been set aside for the public to address the board on items not listed on the agenda. Each public speaker should limit his or her comments to three minutes. But is welcome to distribute any materials to board and/or staff regarding discussion, discussing topics that are not on the agenda. Board members may not engage in dialogue about the issue. Okay, Valerie, do we have any comments from the public?
We do, Mr. Nava. We actually have 17 people waiting to comment, so.
All righty, well, let's.
One minute apiece.
Can I have a timekeeper, Dr. Washer? Okay, Valerie, should we start?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was muted. Mr. Nava, how much time would you like for each speaker?
Three minutes. That's actually, how many do we have? 17?
17.
One minute.
If we could cut that to two minutes, I would be very happy. That would be, give us 24 minutes.
Two minutes each. I'm going to apologize ahead of time to those who are going to speak and it's going to sound rude for me interrupting you this way, but I will give you the two-minute time.
And our first speaker is Martha Snyder.
Can you hear me, Mr. Nava? Yes, we can.
So, good evening, Mr. Nava, members of the board, Dr. Washer, colleagues of Lodi Unified, my students of all ages, their families in the Lodi community. In serving Lodi Unified for 31 years, I've seen our district in good times and in bad, through thick and thin. On what is most likely my last occasion to speak as a faithful employee, I hope to leave you with more than an archive of Citrix Community Share and personal classroom library at Crystal McCullough Middle School. I wish to leave you with a positive thought as you move forward without me. From start to finish, I have found Lodi Unified filled with more than 3,000 employees of all kinds who believe what one of my supervisors so often said, "It's all for the children." To that end, more often than not, children have been put first. And in putting our students first, I pray that you will always remember that Lodi Unified's most priceless and precious asset are its employees. A balance sheet in dollars does not begin to clearly explain in-kind contributions that each and every one of us makes, the value of a job well done day in and day out. In the tough decisions ahead, our district cannot afford to lose even one of its staff. Why? Each of us matters more to a child than any piece of equipment or program in the district's inventory. Let us take leave of the external events, politics, and community factors that we cannot control and go back to dealing with what's left. Each child's attendance, academics, behavior, and health when in our care. After we do that together, let's consider what the best possible tools we already have at hand to create the best program we can deliver with all district hands on one single rope, pulling each and every child who walks through our doors on the first day of school. In closing, I'm happy to say I am passionate today about being an educator due to the fabulous people with whom I've been so blessed to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Valerie, next.
Next up is Erin Tara.
Erin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, President Nava, members of the board, and Dr. Washer. Good evening. As you know, CSTPs are the standards to which educators are held to. And I wonder what CSTPs are you being held to and responsible for? Besides your conscience, which might not be enough during this unprecedented time. There's one CSTP, 6.4, "Working with Families to Support Student Learning." This, during these unprecedented times, this seems to be the most succinct and simple standard that should be the driving force behind every single good faith decision we make as professionals. Negotiating the current contract, yes. Working with families to support student learning. COLA, yes. Working with families to support student learning, 6.4. Personal necessity, yes. Working with families to support student learning. Catastrophic leave, yes. Working with families to support student learning, CSTP 6.4. And my favorite right now, which is denied IDAs. This is a non-example of not working with families to support student learning. After three years at Creekside, my daughter has been denied her, our IDA, which is extremely unfortunate as a teacher working at the same school for 17 years and her attending there for three. So, as you plan and with your approach, you should have one underlying question, 6.4. Is what we are doing, working with families to support student learning? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Valerie?
Next is Jan St. Clair. Go ahead, Jan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'd like to speak to you tonight on two issues. The first is in regards to an idea that fellow kindergarten teachers, Sherry Uniac and I have been thinking about. With a bare moment's notice, our district teachers switch gears from in-person teaching to remote education. We have put in an extraordinary amount of time and effort into this shift. We've taken on the task of doing our own personal professional development in order to learn the technologies necessary for this type of teaching. Sherry and I would like to suggest that as part of the district's upcoming professional development, at least one day be set aside for all teachers across the district to meet in grade-level groups through video conferencing in order to share concerns and solutions for issues specifically related to that grade level. Let's use the expertise that has been developing in our teachers during this pandemic to support each other in this novel, new educational world. The second issue I'd like to speak with you about is the urgent need for a Lodi Unified plan for the coming school year. Families and staff are anxiously awaiting news of such a plan. Everyone needs as much time as possible to plan and develop their strategies for the changes that are coming. Teachers must plan how to best deliver content and meet the educational needs of their students within the parameters of the district's plan. Families need to make plans as well, especially if the new year involves any amount of remote learning. When children aren't in school, childcare becomes a critical issue for lots of families, including teachers who have children at home. I urge you to focus fully on creating a solid plan, which should include keeping budget cuts as far from the direct job of educating our community's children. Please do not waste the resources available to the district on purchasing more software or programs or on the purchase of land for future use. Please invest directly into our students' learning and safety. Since any changes in working conditions need to be bargained as part of the legal process, please direct district staff to come to the bargaining table as soon as possible. The sooner bargaining is resolved, the sooner we can all move forward with a plan that keeps our students' safety in the forefront. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jan. Next, Valerie?
Next, we have Christina Doherty.
Christina?
Hello?
Hello, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, perfect. Um, my name is Christina Dockerty. I teach first grade over at Lawrence. Distance learning has been a challenge for us. I'm sure everyone's very anxious to get back into their classroom to see what the new normal is going to look like. We're going to have to start looking at the budget much more critically and we're going to have to make some decisions. I encourage you to start looking at underutilized or redundant programs. There, we're still paying for the ASCD website and it's hardly being used. We have amazing in-house instructional coaches that are providing wonderful professional development. At the elementary level, I read and amplify. Both are available for student use right now. But one would probably suffice. I have my preference, but two programs are not necessary when we have one that will work. The two professional development days at the beginning of the year are very expensive and that time and money could be much better utilized. We have a bank of PD resources that are being created right now by those wonderful instructional coaches. We're also going to need time at the end of, time to recover from the end of this school year, their end of your tasks that we have not been able to do. We have a lawyer sitting in on bargaining sessions. It was supposed to improve communication and bargaining and it has not. We contract out with companies and we could be hiring our own employees and I imagine it would be a lot more cost-effective. And we have new projects that should be put on hold until this rainy day has passed and we can better afford them. The budgetary items that we have, everyone needs to be looked at and questioned. How does this directly impact this year's students or next year's for next year's budget? Is there another program that does this? Is there another program that does this? And can this be accomplished in a more cost-effective manner? We have a large amount of money in reserve, and it's going to be time to start putting those funds to use. I know salary's the easiest thing to look at, but let me remind you that the district has already received COLA for this year, but employee groups have not. Teachers are using their own resources. I encourage you to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Next, Valerie?
Deanna McMullin.
Deanna?
I don't see her.
She's dropped off, so we will go to the next one, which is Acacia.
Let's go to the next one.
Acacia Sanchez.
Ms. Sanchez?
And she's also dropped off, so we will go to Chris Nice.
Next. What was it? Who was it, Valerie?
Chris Nice.
Chris?
And she's also dropped off.
Right.
Jose Shaunis.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
President Nava, Superintendent Washer, and members of the board. As a teacher in the Lodi Unified School District, I'm encouraging you to support the people who are at the forefront of educating the children of our district and preparing them for success in the future. One of the ways that you could support the teachers is by continuing the negotiation process before the end of this academic school year. Teachers of this, at this present moment, have been working very hard to meet the various challenges of distance learning. As teachers, just as we look for the future, we need the knowledge of what is our future going to be looking like as we open up a new school year. And some of those items may need to be bargained, so I respectfully request that you support the teachers, that you come back and you negotiate with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jose. Next, Valerie?
Jennifer Van Blair.
COLA, costs of living, it's something I think about every single month when I write my rent check. It's something I think about when I pay my child's daycare. Why? Because the costs are always increasing. What isn't? COLA for the 2019-2020 school year. I'm hopeless with the governor's current budget, but even the previous COLA will be given to us, and I'm wondering if I'm even going to be facing a layoff come fall because of these cuts. Sounds like cost of living doesn't get passed on to employees, but I'm currently living in my classroom because it is my home. I'm not getting the funding the state thinks I am paying. I'm getting paid rent because I owe on my classroom that I'm currently living in. And 3% equals $100 a month two years ago, and my daycare costs and my rent costs exceeded $100 a month you paid out because I continue to survive not to thrive. Where is the COLA for this year? Will I be getting it? Because I needed it at the beginning of the school year. I'm paying my internet to teach my class currently. I'm using my electricity to run my classroom currently. It's time to pluck on the money and to sit down and show this that you appreciate it. Don't send out emails during Teacher Appreciation Week saying you care for all that I do. Put your money where your mouth is. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie?
We have Dawn Azusa.
You're on. Is he on or is he off? Let's go to 11.
Bridgette Bury.
Who is it, Valerie?
Bridgette Bury.
Bridgette?
She has dropped off. She's dropped off. We have Gloria Barnside.
Gloria, you're on.
She's not there anymore either. What about Joe Whitworth? There he is.
Hey, Joe, you're on.
What happened to Donovan?
There we go. You hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening. Thank you for your time. I am kind of an outsider to the school district. I live in Sacramento. I travel one hour of my time to get to work and from work. And now, I am putting the hours of the same at home. And there's something to be said about how us teachers are a very powerful force in the classroom, the participation engagement in the classroom. How has dropped because of technology that we're forced to use and have to use to just try to reach our students? I know that every district's different, from Fallon, Nevada, very small town, to a larger town in Reno, and now Sacramento and Stockton. I would hope that this district will start treating us teachers with respect to simply negotiate, to simply talk to us, to simply start the conversation and not put it off. Put it off, you put it off, you put it off, we get tired, and we sign whatever you give us. The time is to start changing this relationship that we have, this division. And I hope that we see change. I probably do work here in Sacramento, but I like Kristin McCall. I like my community there, even though I don't live there. That's my place. That's where I want to belong, and I want to feel belong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Valerie?
Let's try Dawn Azuka again. Dawn, you would unmute your microphone? Dawn Azua?
Might want to mute me.
Okay, we will move on then to Mary Valerah Hood.
We're waiting.
Go ahead, Mary. Mary, are you there?
Go to the next, Valerie.
Okay, Janelle Heinrich.
Janelle, you're on. All right, go to the next.
Okay, we will go to Kelly Hampson.
You're on.
Kelly, unmute your microphone?
Am I unmuted now? There we go, good. Okay, first of all, that made me so, oh, good evening, Mr. Nava, members of the board, Dr. Washer. I'm Kelly Hampson. I teach sixth grade at Julia Morgan, and I've been in the district for over 30 years. It made me very sad to hear the young teacher talking about how not receiving COLA was affecting her life. And I know there are many teachers who feel that same, the need for that money. When I first started teaching in this school district, it was the number-one school district in the entire area. We were the highest paid. We were considered to be the cream of the crop schools. And it was very often, I've mentioned this at board meetings before, the Realtors would go crazy, saying, "Oh, and so Lodi School District, so you'll have great schooling." And my Realtor friends don't really use that as a selling point anymore because our school district is no longer, the teachers are still equality, but I feel that the respect from our school board and our management has kind of changed. We used to have good working dialogue with each other, and there was a feeling of camaraderie. And that has really started to change. And as other speakers have already spoken towards, you need to close out the bargaining for this year. You need to give us the COLA without question, especially if we're looking at taking a 10% cut, which you know, we all will, to do what's right for our kids. We're going into uncharted waters. We have no idea what next year's going to look like. You're going to be asking us to do things that may be very difficult for some people, but we're all going to try and do our very best. You need to show us that you appreciate us. And that's my part on our contract. Please come back, negotiate, and solve, and sign our contract before the end of this school year. The next part is, we need to really seriously look over our budget and decide what is essential. We need to bare-bones cut it so that we do have what we need for the things that are special for our kids. We don't need more technology for, program for this program, for that program. This, we just need, during this period, I'm a technological dinosaur. It took me forever to get into this board meeting. I had to type in the go-to meeting, because I couldn't find where the go-to meeting button was, but I got here. During these last couple of weeks, I've been working with my class every single day because my class is not a class that you can assign something, and they would go and do it. But we've been working together for two hours every day, and they kind of moan when we end our session. Your teachers have been giving so much. And to be truthful, I don't know if it's the same for everyone else, but for me, doing this online teaching has been much more stressful than the normal time up.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, sorry, Kathy. Look through the budget, get rid of the unessential things. And we should be petitioning the state to get rid of testing cuts. They're very expensive. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Valerie, I have 17 already.
I had a request from Dave Proby, but I see he's no longer in the queue, so I believe we are complete.
We're finished. Thank you very much. Thank you, Valerie, for keeping track of them, and track of the speakers, and thank you, speakers, for your comments. We're going to reports now. Staff will give an update on programs that we'll offer to students this summer and potential opportunities for students on Title I schools. Ms. Katuski? Ms. Katuski, available?
Yes, I am. I just had to take a second and unmute my...
Do we want to do the comments from board members?
I'm sorry. I'm going ahead of myself. Ms. Katuski, take a little break, and let me back up on my thing. We have comments from the board, please. I'll just go with Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. Nava. I'll be quick about this. I did go to, or attend, didn't go to, I did from my office at the house. The Oklahoma School Board Association Delegate Assembly this weekend. It was a rather short meeting, so I'm just going to hit the highlights here. But one of the things that came up was the ballot initiative that's coming up. Actually, that took up the majority of the time of discussion on that. It's called "Schools and Communities First." It proposes a change to the commercial side of the Prop 13, and the taxes would be reviewed every three years for increase based on value. So, it would separate the commercial land from the residential land. The big thing, one of the big things about that was that, what I didn't like about it would be the impact on our local community. Farmland in general would be exempt from the commercial increase, except for land that had orchards or vines. And that must specifically been for us, because those property taxes would increase. Now, I voiced my opinion about that, and I don't think it's a good idea. But the other part of that was that only 60%, or 40% of the money raised by this actually goes to schools. Without, there is nothing in there to prevent what happened with our lottery. For those of you who remember that, the lottery was going to save public education. But all that happened was is that the lottery money was, the income of lottery money was offset by decreases in other areas. And this particular item looked like it could be much the same. So, those are the things that I had against it. We did vote. We had three options. It was either opposed, four, or no position for CSBA. And the no position won finally at 64 to 36. So, it was about two-thirds who voted for no position on that. It will be on the November ballot. You're going to see, it is backed by CTA, which was a tough sticking point because the board of, the CSBA does like to support items for CTA as well. We like to work together on student issues and funding. Two years, you'll be seeing the full and fair funding initiative from CSBA open the surface, which does promise a certain level of funding. And it begins out by promising it at the national average, so I think that's something that we need. The other thing that was a big topic there, of course, was the budget. We got an in-depth briefing on the budget, and just like Mr. Con said, it's not looking very good at all. So, we're just going to have to, and nobody knows right now. Nobody knows what's going to happen with the revenues for the state, so we're going to have to just wait and see on that. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Porter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nava. First of all, I was able to sit in on some negotiations with LEA, and then I was invited in with CSCA. And I must comment that the groups acted, both sides, very cordially and were productive. Of course, there are major concerns in regards to finances on both sides. And, but I liked how the interaction went on. I liked how the people worked together. I can only sit in as an observant. I can't participate at all. But board members are allowed to sit in. I was able to sit in with LEA and CSCA, and I found the meetings to be very productive. I think during this time, it's very important for all of us to look at, of course, this is a horrible situation that's going on nationwide in terms of the virus. But it also gives us a time to reflect and pause and look at the things that we're doing, both in terms of learning, budgeting, and our expenditures. And I talked about this last week, God bless you. I talked about this last week. That's a good time to reset and look at how we do things, even things that we think we're doing well, to maybe reflect on that and see if there's ways that maybe we can improve upon that. See all groups coming together. My main concern is, or my main feeling is, it would be great if our sites, custodial all the way up to admin, including, of course, our teachers who are there with the students every day, that we come up with a site plan to make that school a better learning environment. And with that plan, they could deal with other schools, because each school has its own community onto itself. And again, this is an awesome opportunity, us being on remote learning, to do that and look at ways to improve and maybe make ourselves a little leaner. Find out what's working in terms of computer programs and what's not. Let's jettison it. And let's not get any new programs. Let's look at what we have now, see what's working, see what's not, and clean it out. Same thing with our budgeting. How are we budgeting? How are we using our money? Is it effective the way that we do the budgeting in terms of each site? It used to be years ago when I taught that each site was given a certain amount of money, and you ordered through the principal secretary. It was clean, it was quick, it was efficient. And then, of course, our expenditures. What are we really spending our money on outside Measure U? And what is it going for? How does it affect students? Because that's what we're here for. We're here to help our students, our teachers, and our support staff to try to achieve the best learning environment they can have. So, my goal is, hopefully, that we work at improving the position of each stakeholder so that they feel that each site, what they say, has meaning. And then we collectively come together and make Lodi Unified a better school district. So, that's kind of my feeling. I was happy to sit in on those negotiations. And I look forward to taking this rather traumatic, bad situation, but turning it into a positive to make our school district even better with all stakeholders at the table. Thank you, Mr. Nava.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Mr. Kunnaxa?
I'll go ahead and paraphrase.
Well, I'll go ahead and paraphratically hear about, uh, the report items, so.
Okay, Mr. McFarlane.
Thank you, Mr. Navah. Um, I just want to, first of all, acknowledge CSCA. I did get, and so did many of my board members. Last count was over a hundred and fifty emails regarding negotiations, which I was fortunate enough to sit in on as a bystander with several other board members. I do appreciate the passion that comes from some of the emails that we receive. Due to the volume from CSCA, um, I, I will not be responding, but I want you to know that I have read them. Um, and I appreciate your input and I want to commend you on your respectful tone and the manner in which you, um, shared your concerns. Um, grievances and hopes for the future. So thank you for your, for your effort and all those emails.
Okay, Mr. Heberly.
Thank you, Mr. Navah. Uh, the first thing I'd like to mention is the, uh, the student representatives that, uh, we were privileged to have at our meetings this year. It was wonderful as always to have them there. They've got a great perspective on how things work and how things affect them and their classmates. So I just wish them well and thank them for their service. Also, I'd like to thank the students that, um, gave us our Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. Job well done. Thank you very much for that. As Mr. Porter mentioned, I too would really like us to look at our budgetary items. For possible reductions or elimination, or just a new way of looking at them. These, the, the cuts that I look at are always away from the school site. From our, uh, point of service, point of contact with our students. We do have maybe, uh, programs or operations that there's no harm in looking at them, evaluating them. Uh, just because there is a, um, an operation that we've done for a while or a program that we've had for a while. Uh, there's, there's, you need to look at, are we getting a good value for our dollar? And so I, I think that these are times like this is when you really should, kind of like everybody's looking at their own budgets within their home and saying, all right, well, you know? How do we adjust? Well, the district, uh, I believe should take this opportunity and adjust also. So I, I really want us as a district to look at our budgetary items and, um, and see what we can do to reduce those. Uh, and I think information while we do that is, especially if the, the public and our employees are involved. Is that it's important that everybody knows that some of the funds that we have. Are earmarked and designated for that purpose, whatever that fund purpose is only. It cannot go to instruction, it cannot go to anything else other than what it's earmarked, uh, for. Um, and that could be the designated reserve for, uh, maintenance and operations. It could be the Measure U money, Measure L.
Hey, easy.
And yeah, no, no, no. All I'm saying is that those dollars need to be spent on what they're for and they cannot be mixed into, uh, instruction. So when we look at reductions, that money is, it's not all the same, it's not all in one pot. Um, I'm a strong proponent of Measure U and Measure L. That that in itself is an opportunity for us to, um, update our facilities and eliminate portables. And maybe expand capacity at a school and those kinds of things. So those monies are definitely earmarked for that purpose. The point in bringing that up is, is there are other groups, uh, I should say pots of money. That we just, you, you can't move them around. They have to stay for that designated purpose. So putting those aside, there's still plenty of things that we can look at, uh, programmatically and operationally. And, and I'm all on doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heberly. Mr. Fadis.
Thank you, President Navah. And I would like to thank everyone who spoke here today, especially my esteemed colleagues. I join in their comments, uh, especially in looking at the budget and going forward. Um, I'd also like to acknowledge that this is a time of year where we usually have our celebrations. And we recognize that two, uh, very important groups in the Loda Unified family. First off is our retirees, individuals who've given us, uh, many years of outstanding service. And, uh, as board members, I know it's very special for us to be part of that acknowledgement and, and the celebrations that we have. So to, uh, all retirees, congratulations. We, uh, thank you very much for everything you've accomplished for us. And we wish you all the best in your future travels. And, uh, the, the second group that we also acknowledge at this time is our graduates. And, um, while we're hoping to have physical graduations, uh, in the summer. Our virtual graduations are going to be beginning. And to those individuals that have, uh, are, are receiving diplomas from Loda Unified, we couldn't be prouder of you. And we know that you're going to be able to do great things, uh, with that diploma. And we definitely wish you also all the best. Also, I'd like to mention that Sunday was the start of Classified School Employees Week. So I'd like to congratulate CSCA and acknowledge their contributions. Especially the contributions of daily workers for the district. Um, I myself am an essential worker and have been going to court, uh, on a regular basis. And, uh, share many of the concerns. And I greatly appreciate, uh, all of the contributions of these individuals. And, uh, those were my comments. Thank you, President Navah.
Thank you, Mr. Fadis. I just want to congratulate, uh, the class of twenty twenty, um, each school, there's an average of twenty students academically. From, uh, ten to twenty from each school, Bear Creek, McNair, Tokay and Lodi. That were selected in the Stockton Record Pinnacle for their academic endeavors. Congratulations to all those and I'm very proud of them. Generally, the pinnacle comes out about this time every year. And they have pictures of students with four point five, four point six and have honorable mention students also in their list. Uh, negative stuff right now came across my wire. Nine hundred students are involved on this Sacramento, uh, and five other school districts. Says California budget cuts will delay opening. So that's a sad part. So we must await that and then the, the districts that they're talking about are the biggest one with six hundred thousand students. LA Unified, Sacramento, Oakland, San Diego, Long Beach. And, uh, of course, it's, uh, it's not, doesn't look good with the budget cuts of the governor. Saying that, we will want to go to our reports now and I see Mr. Khan. You are in charge, I'm sorry, Ms. Katuski, we already explained that since I got ahead of my schedule. So are you ready? Ms. Katuski.
Good evening, President Navah, members of the board and Dr. Washer. I, I hope you can see my screen. Can you see my summer learning opportunity slide up on the, on your screens?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. All right. Every time we do this, uh, we're expanding our brains and learning new things and challenging ourselves. If we're six years old or sixty-one and a half years old, we're learning, distance learning challenges me every time. Um, I'd like to share with you just briefly, because I know that we have several, uh, reports. With our summer learning opportunities are for this summer. Many of them are, um, actually, I'm not even sure that any of them are brand spanking new. They are repeats, uh, that we have done every summer. We have our migrant summer program that is funded through the migrant funds directly for those students. It will be housed virtually at the camp. I want to thank Edith Holbert and, uh, her group who have been working with the migrant staff. To make sure that all of our students out at the camp have, um, internet access or Wi-Fi. They've been working very well and the students, um, together to create a program. Um, the migrant summer program has, uh, been available to our migrant students for the last ten years that I have been here. That will be offered as a K eight program and it will focus on literacy and mathematics. For the last, uh, three years, I guess this will be our third year. We're, uh, putting forth a math summer institute for third grade through tenth grade students. That will all be virtual and it'll be four hours. I, uh, almost canceled this because I didn't really think that the students would sign up for it. But we have had a tremendous response. I think we're down to the last fifty spots to be available for the summer program. And, uh, the teachers are excited to do, uh, their Elevate Math virtually. It would be different, uh, but they're excited. And then, um, all of our Title One site-based programs, all of our Title One schools, twenty-four of them will be doing some form of an extended learning opportunity. Whether or not it's a two to three week program. Since the district is focusing on mathematics, third through ten. They thought that most of them would focus on early literacy skills. Uh, using of course, some of the programs that we have found to be effective. The Amplify Reading, um, Dreambox, Myon Reading, those types of things that are online. Because it will be virtual also. And, um, we will have teachers, uh, monitoring the students that are participating in that program. They will work, uh, monitoring the growth of the students a couple of times a week at the school sites. Now, um, the middle and high schools, of course, are going to focus on early literacy. They're going to focus on English language labs, maybe making, using their study scene program or mathematics. Whatever the needs or English language are, um, English language development, uh, for their school sites. I am also very pleased to say that, uh, we will be offering a full summer school. And we have two programs going on. One that we would consider, uh, um, what the teachers would like to say is a trial line, trial of online courses. So we have teachers building, uh, content for their courses, uh, for online, virtually for, uh, many other courses. And then, um, for grades nine through twelve. And then we have our Apex Online, which is an on-line course for our juniors and seniors in need of credit recovery. Seniors to be able to graduate and juniors, um, that are deficient that we want to bring up to, to, uh, the grade level. So, uh, in a nutshell, those are the, uh, different summer activities or summer learning thing, uh, opportunities going on. Summer school will be of course, the traditional length. All the other programs are only going to run the month of June. If any, are there any questions?
Yes.
Sorry, I interrupted somebody. Who was that?
Yes, Mr. Porter, go ahead.
Connect said, yeah.
Connect said.
Okay, well, uh, one of my questions about summer school, in particular, the, the, the high school summer school is, are the students going to be held accountable? For their attendance and for making, uh, progress towards a grade? I know we did not do that in, you know, during this, this trying time that we're experiencing right now. It was no foul, no harm type thing, but how about summer school? Are, are they going to be held accountable?
Yes, they will be. Students will have accountability measures that will also be implemented to help them keep track of student attendance. And their daily, uh, monitoring their participation and their work rate. So we are incorporating accountability into, uh, the courses that are virtual. Uh, as teachers want to, uh, experiment and determine how to best teach virtually if we must in the fall.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Porter.
Yes, uh, Ms. Katuski, I want to go back to migrant ed summer program, K through eight.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I do know that we had some issues regarding migrant ed and I went out to Principal Nuss, is that correct? Uh, her school. And, uh, I want to know, uh, I have a couple of questions. First of all, what was the success that I know that the student had to leave for an extended period of time? What was the success, uh, with them doing virtual, uh, learning? And with them doing, um, some of the work that went with them, the hard materials, uh, during that time that they were gone? When they came back, how many of them actually completed the, the work that was assigned to them?
Um, I would say the, uh, excitement of the parents and the support of the parents was very positive. The challenge that the district had was, uh, being able to, uh, get the information to them in a timely fashion. So those parents that kept in touch with the migrant program and continued to talk with us, returned information back to us. But I don't have the actual specifics. I'm not sure that if, if I talk to Ms. Nuss, if she could tell me.
Well, I know that, I know that her school was severely impacted. And there were some rumors, or not rumors, but talk about those students would lose their positions if they didn't do the work. And I'm wondering if we have any hard data to look at on our success with those students and meeting their needs while they were gone. And when they came back, where were they in terms of learning? I know that we have the migrant summer program and that's provided through the county, is that correct?
Yeah, it's provided, uh, through the county using our teachers. Yes.
Yeah, and then they're using county funds on that, is that correct?
Correct. It's migrant funds, yes.
And how many students do we have in that program?
We, they have it, uh, matched out for the summer program to be a hundred and sixty students. Right now, I don't know if they have it filled with all one hundred and sixty spots filled, but that's what they're planning.
How many students in Loda Unified were then gone for an extended period of time during our, uh, March break? Do we have an idea?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Porter, I don't have that in my noodle. I could get that information for you, but right now off the top of my head, I don't have it.
Yeah, that's, that's a crucial need. I, I'd just like to know, uh, how we're doing there. I know the principal Nuss is, uh, working very hard. So the teachers there, they're extraordinary teachers at that school, very, very passionate about their, their students and their situation. And I just wanted to see, uh, how we were doing, uh, meeting their needs. So thank you for your time and just shoot me an email if you have, when you have time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. McFarlane. Are you with us, Susan?
Yes, I had, I had a problem with my mic. Um, no, no comments, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Heberly.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Navah. Ms. Katuski, on, uh, I, I see that during the summer, there's actually quite a few programs that are, um, available for the students. And, and I believe in a previous conversation, you were saying that the students, a lot of students, uh, do have, uh, district Chromebooks, is that correct?
Every student, uh, uh, every student has taken home a Chromebook so that they could work virtually. Uh, since the March break, we've managed to get everybody their Chromebook. And I do believe the technology has worked to make sure that, um, we're making the connection, the internet, uh, connection for all of those students that don't have internet. Uh, we're, we're closing that gap.
Sure. Um, and, and I see the, uh, the migrant, uh, program goes until June thirtieth. The Elevate Math Summer Program goes to July third. So they will, the days, the students, the students will be keeping their Chromebooks, uh, at least until that time. And then they'll probably turn them in somewhere in late July and then be reissued when they come back to school in August? Or how's that work?
Um, it's my understanding that all the children will keep their Chromebooks except for specific grade levels. Like sixth grade will be turning in old ones and getting new ones. Same with middle school and, um, something in high school, but that, I'm just going off my memory because that comes out of the technology department. But the children get to keep their Chromebooks twelve months out of the years, twenty-four seven.
Okay, well then that also, um, leads me into my, my next, uh, comment. And that is, there are a lot of programs that are even outside. And that is, there are a lot of programs that are even outside of Loda Unified's technical grasp, I guess. And so they, they do keep the Chromebooks and they can, you know, go on and find those free programs. And really honestly, there's a lot of them. I have grandkids and we look for things online and it's actually amazing what's out there. Sure, there's plenty of programs that you have to pay for and some of them are extremely inexpensive. But there's a ton of them that are still free. And, and that's why I was asking about the Chromebooks. I, I wanted to make sure that above and beyond what we provide as a district, that, that they have access through their Chromebooks for these other programs. So, and, and really that's about all I have. And so thank you, appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. Navah. Lisa, I'd like to focus on the Title One schools right now. So if we could take a look at that slide.
Oh, yes. I'm looking at my paper.
We've got, look at all your, your data there. It says dates vary, third one from the bottom. And on the bottom it says, "All online programs available until June 24th." Why are we cutting these programs off at June 24th?
Mr. Neely, you have such a good eagle eye when I was typing. It's really supposed to be July 24th, not June 24th. All the programs, all online programs are available until July 24th. That's, we'll cut them off on July 24th because the district needs time to roll all that data and the new class assignments into those programs and that takes about a week. So I apologize for my error of typing June 24th on there.
Not a problem. That, that makes me happy that it goes that far because then we're only looking to the 3rd of August before school's back in session again. All right, that, that's all I got. Thank you very much. That was easy.
Hey, Mr. Fayers.
Mr. Katauski, I'd like to thank you again for your presentation. And you do fall into the retiree group. We're running out of meetings that you're going to be attending as a Loda employee, is that correct?
That is correct. I was counting the meetings just as I was leaving my house to come to this one. Yes, we're slowly but surely, our dates on Tuesday nights are ending. Sorry to say that.
I, I gotta tell you, it's, it's been an absolute pleasure on my part. We've thrown so many different assignments at you and I know you have one more presentation here tonight, but I just couldn't wait to tell you how much I appreciated your innovation, your hard work, your dedication and your real positive attitude in all of your presentations and your work with the district. I greatly appreciate it. I know the district very much has. And no surprise, you did, you hit it out of the park on this one like you've done so many times before. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fayers. One, one quick question, Lisa. Summer school enrollment, are we covering all North Stockton and Loda proper on summer school?
Yes, we are. We had over 1,871 students request summer school. In, for summer school, yes, and that will be the work, the distance learning. And we're hiring 42 teachers to do that. So I believe we'll be able to serve all of the students. And then for the 11th and 12th grade Apex Credit Recovery, we have a program capacity of 200 students. So I believe we will, we will be serving all of the students that need summer credit recovery or those that needed the course for advancement.
Awesome. I'm thinking, I'm, I'm curious about the success that we're going to have with this distance learning with some focused students that are willing to go, to go to school and attend summer school. I'd like to see the, the results when we finish with that, okay?
Yes, I'm actually very excited to also, because it will be a trial experience for us, one that we've planned for and been able to work with the teachers to develop. So it should, it should give us a good indication of what school might look like in the fall.
Very good, Lisa. At least you have something exciting to think about before you leave, huh?
It's not boring. I will agree to that.
Thank you again. Thank you for your report. It was very thorough and we had some pertinent questions on your report. Thank you again. We will continue on with the reports. I need, we have update on planning.
Excuse me, Mr. Navah, we have a comment from the public.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Valerie. Thank you for reminding me. I didn't, you know, when I don't see people, I get a tunnel vision and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to exclude the audience. We have any comments from the audience?
We have a comment from Michelle Orgon.
Okay, Michelle, you're on. Sorry.
Thank you, President Navah, for the opportunity. We had a couple of questions. We really liked that summer school was more inclusive and we were expanding it. We're really excited about that trial for the virtual. However, there was a mention of all students having devices. And I've got some reports that there are some students that still do not have devices. Some of our TK classes and our preschool students do not have devices. And it's my understanding from a couple of reports, messages that I've just got in, some of the kinder classes do not have devices because they're shared. Will we be working on getting those students' devices over summer?
Is that a question for me to answer?
And I don't know, yeah, I don't know, Lisa, if you know that or if that would need to go to technology. But it's our understanding that there are still students that don't have devices. Of course, you know, we know that the hotspots just came out and that they got more students online the week before last and more this week. But we still have students that don't have devices. And when that came up, I was just wondering if we're going to try to get those TK students and our preschool students and some of our kinders that didn't get devices, devices over summer.
Yes, we will work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Any other comments from the audience?
I don't know if there's any way to sign in, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Hang on just a second. Can you hear me at the meeting?
Yes, who is it?
Lisa, I guess it was kind of a premonition when I said, if I don't see before you retire, have a wonderful retirement. Thank you so much for all that you've done, Lisa. You've just been amazing to work with. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Take care and have a.
Any other comments from the audience, Valerie?
No.
Okay, then we will continue on with our agenda. Second report is update on planning for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Washer.
Thank you, Mr. Navah, members of the board. We have some information to share with you before we engage in a discussion. This is an initial conversation about planning for the next school year. We know that everybody is anxious about getting some definite decisions made, but we also know that a lot can change between now and the start of school and we have to be able to be flexible. We don't want to get one plan set and then have something change in terms of orders or guidelines that would throw us back into planning mode. So we know that we need to be flexible, have different scenarios ready to go and work with our stakeholders to make sure that we address the major issues. So tonight, I'm just going to share with you some things that we're working on. There's an executive summary showing on the screen. We have, as you know, had task force committees who have been talking about this. We actually have the, the task force divided into three groups, one elementary, one middle and one high school. And they have been talking about things that would need to be discussed for the start of the school year. Some of those things are listed there and Lisa will talk more about that in a moment. Then there is also a draft document that is attached to the agenda that outlines some assumptions. And this is not intended to be a plan or a decision of any sort. This assumption document simply identifies some of the assumptions that we believe or know at this point, identifies some areas to consider when making decisions. It's more of a guide. I don't want anyone to think that that is a plan in of itself. It's something that could be useful as we're talking about what we need to look at for next year. I also want to mention the thought exchange survey that we did. It went out to staff and parents and it just closed on Sunday. And if that could be that summary, can we share that? While they're working on that, I'll tell you what the, the question that we posed to our community. Given the possibility of starting school in a new way, what ideas, thoughts, questions and concerns come to mind for you? That is, that was the question that was posed. We had almost 3,000 people respond to the survey and it generated over 3,400 thoughts. There we go. Thank you for putting that up. So it's quite a large document. It is available on our website. If anybody wants to go through and look at all the thoughts and look at everything that came from the thought exchange, you certainly can do so. But here are some of the major themes that came up. And it's not surprising that some of these rows to the top, especially things like health and safety and distance learning and of course, what is going to happen next school year. So listed there are the major themes and within each theme, if you want to look at the actual document, it's broken down into what came up in those themes. Because if you look at just the theme, for example, the one about social distancing. Some of it had to do with concerns about social distancing. Some of it had to do with suggestions about social distancing. So within each theme, there were many, many comments. So I'd encourage anyone who's interested in seeing what everyone thought and, and how that all played out, to take a look on our website and, and look at the thought exchange. As we go through this process, we will continue to put out these types of surveys to narrow down the focus. So this was the first broad scope. So we got a lot of comments about a lot of things. As we begin to narrow the conversation down and start to come up with some more definite ideas and plans, we'll be able to ask more pinpointed questions to those so that we can get the opinions and ideas from our community about very specific things. This one was very broad in nature. If we could go back to the executive summary. There we go. Good, we could show, there, next step. So the next steps, we're going to continue the task force conversations and recommendations. We do believe that we need a study session for the board to talk about this in more depth. So hopefully we can schedule that fairly soon. We're going to have additional opportunities to get staff and parent input. We're going to start refining the suggestion so that we take that narrow, take that large thought exchange process and start funneling it down to some, some decision-making ideas. And then we're going to keep updating our board at the regular Board of Education meetings as well. But we do believe that we need a study session. But now I'm going to ask that Lisa take you through some of the conversations and ideas that have come up through our task force committees, because these will be the more specifics. So Lisa, are you ready?
Yes, President Navah, members of the board, Dr. Washer. Just see if you give me a minute. Yes, I think I'm ready. I don't know exactly. There we are. I hope you can see my screen. This is the Distance Learning Task Force. I'm sure you've all heard that we have three committees. The reason for three committees is that the issues that elementary face and the issues that high school face are very different. And we have a lot of work to accomplish through our committees and we didn't want people to feel like their time was being wasted listening about elementary when they were really high school and they were there to solve high school problems. You can see that we have a, a good membership of teachers, administrators. On the secondary committee, we have secondary, different content levels and counseling and registrars and even some technology staff, because everything at secondary involves Aries and the grades and things like that. So we needed to involve technology to make sure that what we're thinking about is even possible. We wouldn't want to come forward with a recommendation and then have somebody tell us that the, the software or the program won't work that way for us. Most of our work has been about resolving, making some recommendations to resolve issues as they come up. And it's sometimes we feel like we're a little bit behind the, the eight ball, but as, as the timeline comes closer, you know, first we had to talk about what is really distance learning? What does it mean? How many hours of a day? What is it require of teachers? Grading was a, a long and hard discussion. Each, each of the committees came up with three different ways of grading. And then of course, the high school has their credit petition. We had discussions about AP testing and concerns that we tried to help eliminate some of the stress that the, the college board was putting on students and the great need for internet access and bandwidth, I guess is the word I'm looking for. Spent a lot of time on the report card for elementary schools, standardizing. You know, after we agreed upon that we would hold them harmless, what does that really look like on an elementary report card? So that parents could understand it and that our report card looked the same from school to school to school. That took us several meetings to work through and we had staff from AREE working on that with us. And we finally did a complete revision of that report card with comments. And today we had our first discussion of what would school look like in the fall, even though we really haven't gotten much direction from the CDE or the governor. We did look at some models that were presented to the committee for discussion and concern. And, and I think we're looking at two models to do some further discussion on. Our, our thoughts of models would be to look at something that if we had to start really small, based on how many students could be in a classroom, that we can expand with relatively little difficulty as more ease is given to students to attend school. If, with the hope that eventually we could do school looking more like school, knowing that it won't always, it will never come back to the way we have seen it in the past. There are a lot of, the teachers had a lot of concerns. We have teachers that are in the high risk group and they're, they're worried about their own self, self-help plus students that are in the high risk group. So you can see that we had a, a long list of questions and how are we going to take care of these concerns? We haven't tackled all of these issues. Some of them maybe we, we can give recommendations to, but they are at the forefront of the committee's minds of the teachers and the individuals on there. You can just see that they're, I, I think they're doing a wonderful job. I don't, I enjoy facilitating the meetings. Sometimes they get into things that I hadn't even thought about, but they're a good group of individuals to work with. This idea about eliminating breaks, today I heard from them that they didn't like the idea of giving up their October, March breaks and their December breaks. They would not recommend that. Maybe, you know, that's something that they had talked about, but they didn't think that they liked that. So just some ideas of the, of the comments that they have. I want to share that elementary is really struggling with the idea of, you know, an elementary teacher teaches five content areas a day. When you, when you look at that versus a secondary teacher who teaches, you know, two different courses in math. who teaches, you know, two different courses in math, Math 1 and Math 2, or English 9 and English 11. It's really hard for elementary teachers. They feel like they have just, what was the word? It's unattainable. I can't continue to give the amount of work that I'm doing right now. I'm working seven days a week, 24 hours a day, trying to plan my lessons for all of this content. So we have to really think about what we're doing and what we're asking of our elementary teachers, because they are covering a lot of subjects and trying to do a lot of innovative things. And they're really going to need a break very soon. You can just see, and so when I put this together, we had the potential models for next year. We'll continue that with our middle school and our elementary schools. Middle school tomorrow and elementary on Thursday. And we'll share the thought exchange feedback, which, as Kathy mentioned, or Dr. Washer mentioned, was quite extensive. That's all I have for what our task force are doing.
Thank you, Lisa, for your report. Any board members, Mr. Neely, you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Dava. You know, when are we looking at having the study session?
That is up to the board. We would like to have it fairly soon so that we can start drawing some things down.
What about Thursday?
The board members?
I have one question.
I've got some questions for you, too, but I just want to get that straight.
Okay, one question for our superintendent. Your directions will come in from the county superintendent and the governor as to the opening of schools, when they will open. Is that correct?
The county superintendent will make, can make recommendations, but the county superintendent won't give any direction. Direction will come from the governor and public health in terms of parameters. We don't expect the governor to give a specific direction on a model. What we anticipate would be any type of number of groups, you know, size of groups that can meet, or parameters for health and safety. Those are the kinds of things we expect from the governor and public health, rather than dictating a specific model. We believe they will leave that up to the school districts.
Okay, now, I understand that. But they will dictate that, okay, this Plan 6 is opening all schools. Districts decide how they're going to do it. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Dava, we believe that that's how it will pan out. I believe that schools are in Phase 3 of reopening the state in terms of the governor's plan. We are currently in the beginning of Phase 2.
Okay, that being said, you know, we would be, it would be nice to have a study session on this and hash everything out, get every board member to contribute, and all this, the task force that you have to let us know what their thoughts are, and we can do it in a relaxed manner. And we don't want to do it maybe in June sometime, or is it too late? Way late? I know we have a board meeting on the 2nd of June. Our next board meeting will have, actually, we don't have any board meetings next week except for maybe a little bargaining post-session. Any thought on the board, any thoughts on board on time?
Let's do it on the 28th after the close session.
Okay, close session, Gary, was on Tuesday, the 26th.
26th?
Yep. This is Ron Heberly. If the admin is ready, I'm ready anytime. And I think the sooner the better, because it's going to probably end up being more than one discussion.
That is correct, members of the board. It will be more than one discussion. And I don't anticipate a decision, a final decision, being made at a single study session in the near future. I think it's going to take some time. And I would like to ask Lisa about the task force committee schedule. When are your next meetings?
We have the middle school meeting tomorrow. It's from 2:00 to 3:00. And the elementary on Thursday morning from 10:30 to 11:30.
And the high school?
They repeat. We just had our high school today. So next Tuesday would be high school, Wednesday would be middle school.
Let me throw this out, then. We have a close session on bargaining on the 26th at 5:00 p.m. How about a study session right after the close session at 6:00?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I agree.
No, that, no, I don't think that's, I think we should keep it separate so that we're not rushed. And I would suggest either May 21st or May 28th, or pick a day. I don't care. But if we cram too much in one day, I think we do any of the subjects a disservice.
Okay. It's not set in stone that we have to do it on a Tuesday. But what about if we have a close session on bargaining on the 26th, come back on the 27th at 5:00 for a study session?
I'm good with that.
Anybody else? Any comments?
Mr. Dava, this is me, McFarlane. Personally, I'd like to move it up to have it be this week. I think as we get to the end of next week, the anxiety will raise because it is the end of the year. And I think the sooner we can get the teachers, the parents' information, I think it would be who of us to work a little quicker than the end of next week.
Okay, the reason I say that.
I also want to mention that next week is extremely busy, being the last week of school. A lot of folks are going to be busy with their alternative celebrations and their other activities.
And also, I want to mention that Lisa mentioned the 20th and 21st, their meetings with a task. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, it is.
We want to have it after those meetings. I would think it would have more information. So unless you want to go to Memorial Day, which I don't want to, I would like to have it on Wednesday at 5:00, if there's no disagreement with any of the board members.
Heberly is good with that.
Are we going Wednesday, the 27th?
Yes.
Okay, and Lisa, the meetings are, Tuesday is high school, middle school Wednesday, and elementary is Thursday. Is that correct?
Correct.
Wouldn't it be better to meet after they have met so we could gather their information as well?
Yes, this is after they meet, Mr. Porter. We meet on the 20th, 20th and 21st. They meet this week, and then we will, if we schedule it on a Wednesday, we've already had, they've already had their meetings.
Yeah, but you're missing out on the elementary on the 28th.
We actually will meet next week on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday also.
Yes, yes, okay. So you have, you don't meet on the 28th.
The 28th that they meet. So I would like to have all of the input from all of the levels before we meet again.
So what if we had it on the evening of the 28th?
Sounds great. That sounds good, too.
Mr. Roland, 5:00 is fine for the 28th, and that's a Thursday. Anybody opposed to that?
No, I continue now.
Yeah, okay, George, are you opposed to it?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
We can have it on the 28th, 5:00 p.m., study session on the subject, Dr. Washer. And then if we can keep these comments short, then we can save them all to the 28th, and then we can really have a blast then.
I just, Mr. Dava, I just wanted to, I would just like to check with Lisa to make sure that the 28th is okay.
Well, that's a really awkward spot to be in. Thank you, Dr. Washer, for asking that. Maybe not quite 5:00, maybe a little later. I do have a little celebration for my retirement that night, that day.
Anybody opposed 6:00?
No, no.
6:00 then. 6:00. Is that okay, Lisa?
That works for me. Thank you.
All right, let's do it at 6:00. Thank you. Okay, George, you have some comments?
All right, look, a couple of things on this. And I wanted to talk about this before you have your meetings, because there's a couple of things we need to think about. First of all, we've got, you know, K includes TK. So we've got K-12 going on here, that we're going to be looking at bringing back programs. So they don't all have to be the same. And we need to look at that. Our younger kids, our TK, K up to third grade, they're going to need a lot more hand-holding in order to get through this. So we want to maybe have them scheduled to come in more. Some of our other students, we might be able to spread out a little bit more where they don't have to come in so often. And we need to have a couple of backups on this, thinking about the changing situation, because we don't know what the situation is going to be like three months down the road. We're just, or too much down the road. We just don't know what it's going to be. So if we can take a look at that, that would be fantastic. Also, we need to try to build on what we've done so far. We're getting equipment out there. Our kids are getting used to it. So we need to build on that. And look where we can take this. This could answer a lot of issues for us, including class size. As an example, let's say you've got a third-grade class, and you split them in two, and you've got 12 at one time and 12 at another time. That gives you your social distancing space and also allows a teacher to teach critical things. And then some of the other things might be able to be done online. These are just some thoughts. There's a lot of possibilities out there. What concerns me is that in the past, when we have done committees, task force, things tend to just go kind of slow. And we can't afford that this time. We've got to make a decision on how we're going to do it and then implement that. Yes, we may have to make changes as we go. That's what happens. We can't wait to have the perfect solution, because we're not going, no matter which solution we pick, it's not going to be perfect for everybody. So all we've got to do is pick something with as much input as we can, pick it, and then go with it. And that's all I've got for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Roland. Thank you, Ms. Neely.
Mr. Dava?
Yes, yes, Mr. Porter.
Yeah, I have, I guess this is a pet peeve, maybe, coming from my teaching days. But if we have these task force and from all three levels, and we have parents that are involved as well, I would hope that we would not repeat the same mistakes that we've made in the past. And say that we have those task force. They come up with a body of work, and none of it gets inputted. And these people see this, they're in the task force, they put together a product, and then when we go to make the decision, none of their ideas come through. Happened with ARBIT, which we thought was wonderful. Where is it? Summer school. Thank God the school board went a different way. Now we have 1,800 kids involved in summer school. Now we're talking about the opening of school, and we've got teachers and parents, all these administrators involved at the site level working. And I hope that their work will be included in our decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Mr. Knackzak?
Yes, thank you. I, in so far, it seems to me that the 100% of the virtual learning or distance learning simply does not work. It just doesn't. Maybe one, you know, somewhere down the line it might. But I would like for the planning committees or task force to come up with something that gives us the most amount of face time with students they possibly can, something like, even if it's something like two hours, you know, a week or something, so that there's some continual face time with students, because I think that's what's, that's really necessary for kids and, you know, to learn. So when they're thinking about it, that's what I'd like them to concentrate on.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McFarlane?
I would like to get to our study session, take the advice of our task force and our cabinet, and review it under a different circumstance, because I think we all have ideas. And I'd like to take, wait to hear what the task force has to say and what cabinet has come up with for suggestions for us. I think we would simply be spinning our wheels in open session without some critical data that we need in order to make these decisions. But I appreciate everyone's opinions.
Thank you, Susan. Mr. Heberly?
I've pretty much said what I think needs to be said from my perspective. And a lot of it is, you know, the task force, these are the people in the trenches that know exactly how operationally something could function. They'll have those ideas. And just blend those in with whatever plan comes up to. Obviously, like Dr. Washer said, we've all got to be flexible. And what we're doing is we're planning for different scenarios to somehow dovetail into one plan. So I'm definitely looking forward to the study session.
Yeah, Mr. Freitas? Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, President Dava. I'd like to thank everyone for all their work. There's so many issues here on so many different levels. And I'm going to reserve the remainder of my comments for the study session. And I look forward to hearing more great ideas, because I know we're going to do right by our kids. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. I will reserve my thoughts. I have different, completely different thoughts in this task and the different thoughts in how we'll conduct education to the maximum of their safety and their health and their learning. So I will reserve all my comments to the study session. As of now, just a reminder, the study session is at 6:00 on the 28th. And we will, any other questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Washer, for your explanation. And Lisa, on task force meetings and so forth. Now, we will go through our next report.
We have one taking comments.
I'm sorry, comments from the audience, yes. Okay, thank you, Valerie, for reminding me. Yes, Michelle?
Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you again. First, Leah definitely wants to thank Lisa Kautowski for her many years of service. And boy, we've given her a run for her money in the last few months and really appreciate the open dialogue. We do feel that there are some people that are left out of the discussion. And as we move forward, we'd like to see them included. They have not been part of the task force. We do not have special ed teachers represented at those different grade levels. We do not have TK represented or preschool represented at those levels. And as we talk about distance learning, I don't, that has been left off along with our CTE teachers at the high school level. And I don't know, I know special ed has a separate task force, but maybe before the study session and the next five task force meetings, we should blend some of those voices in so we can catch them up and hear what they have to say about those grade levels and how we would go forward. I'd also like to point out, as this is something with negotiations, it would be helpful to have had more people understand as they were on that, that they were looking at things of changing working conditions. We understand that the continued conversations have been good. And as Lisa has said many a times, oh my gosh, we're over on time. There are some very great dialogues, high school today. I have to tell you, you know, the thoughts of the different models and plans is very hard to think about how that is going to go and whether it is a one model for the entire district or several. But I really But I really think we need to bring other parties to this table to discuss it, because we are leaving them out of the discussion, and this does affect them, and they are very different learners. And I don't know if that's, you know, putting more work on Lisa at the end. If preschool, TK, and CTE, and special ed, as special ed is the SDC teachers, but the RSP teachers at each of those grade levels, how would that look as they would do that? And we have not addressed that in these task force meetings going forward to next year. I know special ed is doing how to meet the needs of special ed. So I'd just like to bring that also to the table to make sure that when we are making decisions at the study session and going forward with suggestions, everybody's voice is heard. Thank you for the thorough report, Lisa, and look forward on the update to the planning and the further refining of the different models that we've talked about. And thank you for the CSCA representatives that have helped, especially with the report card and changing that. I tip my hat off to Deb Ludwig and her team and UVA for helping with the elementary report card and getting that done rather than a form. That was an amazing thing, where heads came together and problem solved. So I think we can do the same, bringing these other voices in. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments from the audience?
No, that's the only comment.
All right, let's go with our report from fifth and sixth-grade combination class support teachers, job responsibility and funding. Scotty, are you on board? Mr. McGregor?
I'm here. Can you hear me, Joe?
You bet. Yes, we can.
All right, excellent. Good evening, President Nava, members of the board, and Dr. Washer. I'm bringing some information to you tonight on the five-six combination classes or support positions that are in the district. We have four combination support teachers during the current 1920 school year. Those teachers supported students at Larson, Mosher, Oakwood, and Woodbridge. The average salary with benefits per site for those five-six combination support teachers is on average $45,000. This equates to a cost of approximately $180,000 for the 1920 school year for those five-six combination support teachers. What those teachers do is, of course, is they come in and they are assisting the five-six combination teacher, primarily with math, but in other areas too, because they're a half-time teacher. The projected staffing for the 2021 school year, initially based upon the numbers I was working with as we got the staffing information for next year, came out to nine combination support teachers for the 2021 school year. Enrollment numbers have changed just a little bit, which was fortunate, and I've been able to drop the nine to seven positions, which has a projected cost of approximately $315,000 for the 2021 school year. The projected sites for next year are Clermont, Heritage, Live Oak, Nichols, Wagner-Holt, Washington, and Westwood. We were able to dissolve the five-six combo support positions at Needham and at Reese, thankfully. That worked out really well. So we are still at seven, and as I said, that cost would be $315,000. I'm bringing this to you tonight just so you can understand, these positions are not currently filled. So there are not currently teachers in these positions, which creates a potential cost savings to the district of approximately $315,000 if those positions were left unfilled. So while that's a good cost-saving consideration for the district, those teachers also provide a great deal of support, obviously, for the teachers as well as the students. And I've asked Woodbridge Principal Neil Young and one of his sixth-grade teachers, Christine Alberg, as well as Larson Vice Principal Sarah Santana and five-six combo support teacher Lindsay Vacarezza to be available this evening to answer any questions, should the board have any questions for them or myself.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I'd like to poll board. Mr. Heberly, any questions?
Sorry, I'm muted. I do have a question. Thank you for waiting. I do have a question. So you're saying right now we have seven possible positions? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. For this school year run, we had four. Again, those were, you know, at Larson, Mosher, Oakwood, and Woodbridge. But we do have a projected need for seven, because we currently have seven five-six combination classes slated for the coming school year. So that's correct.
So now, one teacher stays at one school. They don't move from, let's say, a morning at school A and the afternoon at school B. Is that correct? They stay at one school?
Those teachers are hired, they're a .5 position, so they stay at the site, and they're assisting, primarily those positions were put in place, I believe, about four years ago, because the math curriculum is, the same curriculum is taught kindergarten through fifth grade, but the sixth-grade math program switches to something that the seventh and eighth graders use. So it was kind of a very difficult thing, and that was the need to bring that support teacher in, because that's quite a bit of work for that, the five-six combination teacher.
Okay, so basically, you're saying these are, as it stands now, seven positions, and each position is a .5 FTE?
Correct. And the cost, the projected cost for those seven teachers would be approximately $315,000 next year.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Heberly. Gary, Knackzak?
Yeah, I don't really have a question, but it seems like this is probably a pretty important thing to have. So thank you for the report.
You're very welcome. Ms. McFarland?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Porter?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Freitas?
Thank you for your report, Scott.
Mr. Neely?
Thanks for the report, Scott. I've got no questions.
Scotty, thank you for the report. I know that we will do the right thing.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Scott, for your report, and let's go on with our...
Mr. Nava, I have one public comment.
Comments from the audience.
And that would be Michelle Worgon.
All right, Michelle, go ahead.
To speak, sorry, and I speak too early. Thank you, President Nava, for allowing me to speak again. We had, we had a question on, you know, this goes back to Catherine Pennington days where, when the curriculum changed, because the math was so different at a five-six combination, it was to help those five-six combos, that they, the half-time person would be helping out with the math curriculum. If Mr. McGregor could explain, I believe most of those half-time positions are also full-time positions. The other half, for many of them, are picked up at the school site as an intervention. Can you clarify that, Mr. McGregor? Is that true for all seven sites?
Mr. McGregor? I think we thanked him, Michelle, and he...
So...
Okay, hold on. He's here. Okay, Scott.
Okay, thank you, Joe, and thank you for the question, Michelle. So an example would be at Larson. Currently, the five-six combo support teacher is Lindsay Vacarezza. She is a half-time for the five-six combination support. She's also a reading intervention teacher. So she is there as a full-time teacher in a couple of different capacities. I don't know, Michelle, to answer your question specifically, if that is across the board. I think for sure they are all five, a .5. Sometimes, in, as in Lindsay's case, they're picked up possibly with another .5. And I know a lot of the Title I schools might lean on them with an hourly time card if there is additional support needed.
So, so maybe we could find out if any of these are also serving another half-time function, and what that half-time function is. I believe some of them are doing reading intervention, and I don't know if that's the Read 180 or not. So that might weigh through the board's side of the equation. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. All right, let's continue on with our agenda on our last report. Ms. Katowski on school age, family education program for 2020, 2021, funded through Title I.
Thank you, President, and all the members of the board, and Dr. Washer. Edith, are you giving me my screen back, Edith? Thank you. As you can see, attached to the board item, I was sharing with you some information on this student and family empowerment program, SAFE, that we have had in the district since we started our LCAP process. We brought that on through the Child Abuse Prevention Council, San Joaquin County, to work with our Tier Three students in behavioral issues. And the explanation of how we kind of stack these services, our Tier One support for behavioral issues are counselors. Our Tier Two can go from counselor to point quest staff. And our Tier Three, which are the smallest group of our students, we would serve with our SAFE program, our clinicians and family advocates from the council. The numbers for these type of students aren't very high in the sense that it's kind of a one-to-one ratio, because the behavioral issues, the emotional issues are quite extreme, can be extreme. So Dr. Seha and I have been watching this program last year and this year, and we're noticing that we do not have full use or acquisition of as many students through the program at many of our Title I school sites. So I'm sharing with you the idea that we would be reducing the level of service through the SAFE program to just the top four schools, maybe adding a fifth school or a sixth school, but really the schools that have been using the program consistently over the last several years. And I know that we have new principles and challenges, but we're proposing to reduce the Title I funding and just support four schools for next year. Yes. So I'm just bringing this forward to you as an information item that we too, in Title I, are looking at our programs to make sure that they're effective, and they're making change, and making reductions as needed, because we don't know if our Title I funds will be reduced or not, but it's always good to watch a program and adjust as needed. So that's all I have to say right for this.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Let's poll the board. Mr. Freitas, any comments?
Thank you, Lisa, for the report. So help me understand this. We paid about 96...
$926,000.
$926,000 for about 100 students?
It, there should have been at least 15 students at every school site. And you can see that we didn't have 15 students at every school site being serviced. That's why we had schools that only had five or three or two students being serviced. But the budget was built on the need that they should have 15.
So there should have been 15 students there. Many cases there weren't. Most cases there weren't. And they charged this, the county charges $77,000 per site, whether there was 15 students or two students there.
Right, because they had to provide the services of the two. They hired the individuals, the staffing for that, yes.
Okay, well, that is very disappointing. And, you know, this is one of the projects this board created, that we were trying to encompass the total holistic approach in working with the children and their families. So I would, and I also think this is going to be an example of one of the hard decisions that we're going to be facing going forward as to what to spend money on and what we can't spend money on. It would also seem to be that some of the schools that have smaller amounts of kids, we should be able to negotiate and have one council work at all three, maybe three different campuses or such. But yes, obviously paying $926,000 for 100 kids did not make a lot of sense. So we appreciate you relooking at this.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. Mr. Heberly?
Yes, thank you. I first wanted to start off by saying, yeah, I am in support of this proposed reduction. And one things, one of the things I look at is that this is a budget reduction that does not affect our employees. These employees are county employees. So, you know, granted, it is difficult to remove a service, but part of what we have to do is make sure that we're getting the best value for our dollars, especially when we're potentially looking at cuts. So I do appreciate you bringing this forward. And, you know, just, yeah, I am in support of reduction, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, Mr. Neely?
Thank you, Mr. Nava. You know, I've been supporting this program since it began, and I hate to see this, but, you know, there's going to be a lot of things that I hate to see with these special cuts. So thanks, Lisa. I appreciate the information, and that's all I've got.
Okay, Mr. Porter?
My only question is, is it possible to consolidate, Lisa?
Like Mr. Freitas was talking about, seeing if we could join a couple of more schools together? Is that how you're talking about consolidating?
Well, I hate to stigmatize, because moving students is one of my thoughts, so you have more concentration. I didn't, I don't know if that's a possibility. It is a wonderful program. And I hate to think of money as being one of the reasons why we can't do it. I was just curious if we could, you know, move those two, three, four, five students and consolidate at a site and provide them with transportation. That was just a thought.
It's something we could think about. I think one of the reasons, and this is just a personal opinion of mine, and is that, you know, they, the family advocate, there's a real reluctance for the parents to have the service at home, which is something that we can't really deliver with their counselors. And so even though we have students with needs, sometimes the parents say, no, thank you, because they're uncomfortable with an organization coming to their house to work with them, that kind of thing.
Right, or just, you know, trying to get some ideas where these kids that, obviously, you know, through no thought of their, you know, have been abused, and we'd like to do as much as we can for them. We could always offer. I, you know, I'm just stumbling with ideas here. So thank you, Lisa. I appreciate it.
Mr. McFarland?
Thank you, Joe. While I am in support of the reduction, it pains me because it involves students. I think this is, as we've been told many times, tough decisions are coming our way, and this is one that does not sit well with me. And I think what it tells us as a board is we need to start looking at creative ways of bringing services to students that are more cost-effective. And this, I believe, is going to be the first one, but I do thank you for your report, Lisa.
Mr. Knackzak?
Thank you, President Nova. I agree. Spending that much money for a relatively small number of students just doesn't make much fiscal sense to me. And yeah, I support some kind of a combination or consolidation of the service if possible. But yeah, I don't think we can spend that much money as it is now. We probably need to get rid of that. So, thank you.
Okay, Lisa, I know that we have eight schools with thirty-five students that have been served at this time and four schools that almost have the same amount, like sixty students or fifty. Again, consolidation, can, can those counselors take two or three schools? If we had three counselors, can they, can they split up and take some schools and serve those students?
That would, that would have to be, Mr. President Nova, that would have to be something that I would have to sit down with the Child Abuse Council staff and discuss with them to see the possibilities of, if that is something that's possible. But we do have a meeting for later on this week to talk to them. So that's something that I can share with them and see what they're thinking about that.
Yeah, if you cut down to four counselors for, for those eight schools, you know, then, then they serve thirty-five students there. And I'd like to see that better than busing these kids, you know, because they're at their own home schools and it would be better for the, for the counselor to follow them. I like the program and I know that Mr. Freitas mentioned at the beginning, I think one of our former board members was responsible for bringing this up and it's a beneficial program. So whatever we can do, again, we're dealing with students and money. So that's all I have to say. Any comments from the audience?
Mr. Nova, we have one comment.
Yes.
On Michelle, we're gone.
Okay, Michelle.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Valerie. Thank you, President Nova. Yes, we are happy to see this out there. This did come out of some of the LCAP discussions that we had with Ms. Katuski and Raphael Seha and teachers brought up the issues of parents not signing off on this. So the question is, are we, are we able to take all of these students and take this million dollars off and maybe increase some of our psychologists, our own employee psychologists and counselor time to help with some of the student needs on these sites? Is that a possibility? And then it would be kept in-house? And parents who feel comfortable with their onsite counselors, some did not feel comfortable signing the waiver. And granted, we know some of it was therapy, but some of our counselors and psychologists are trained. Can we make changes to this with getting rid of SAFE altogether? We did see its purpose and its day in the beginning and had some good results. But as of late, teachers are saying that parents just will not sign the form and their kids are not attending. So we're spending a lot of money. So maybe if they could see their site counselors or psychologists for issues and maybe if some of the money was diverted to that bargaining unit to increase hours or numbers, I'm sure it would not add up to that amount that is there. But the value we believe in our LPPA members, we think could serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Lisa, for the report. And we'll go continue on with our agenda and we'll go to action items. Consent Agenda A, Routine Business. Is there any board members that want to pull any of the items?
Yes, Mr. Nova.
Yes, Mr. Porter?
I'd like to pull A one through seven.
A one through seven. Okay, let me see. All right, anybody else?
A eight.
Who's, who's speaking?
Valerie, I'm sorry.
Okay. Somebody wanted to pull A eight? Any other, anybody else pulling any, any other board members that want any of the items pulled? Okay, how about the audience?
Mr. Nova, there was also item A eight that an audience member wished to pull.
Who's, who's got A eight?
Michelle, we're going.
Okay. All right, okay. I entertain a motion, please, on the rest of the routine agenda.
We approve, Neely.
All right, Mr. Neely has moved to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. McFarlane. The rest of the consent Agenda A, Routine Business items, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Okay, nobody opposed. Okay, motion carries. Mr. Porter, you got A one, please.
Yeah, I have questions for Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Is Mr. Khan available?
Mr. Khan? Mr. Khan?
I'm available now, yes.
All right, he's available now. Good.
I got a lot of questions for you. Item one six four oh one oh nine six, Dance Word Solutions. What is that?
I got one six four oh nine oh six.
Nine six.
I'm sorry, you broke up, Mr. Porter. One six four oh nine.
Oh nine six.
Oh one oh nine.
For nine hundred and thirty dollars. Are you still there, Mr. Khan?
They are, they are dance items that were ordered by Foley and Magnuson.
Who is that?
It's Toke High School. I don't know who the staff members are, sir.
And that was approved? Okay, just curious. And then oh, one six four oh one one three, PDK. Who is PBK? PBK? I looked them up. I googled. I couldn't figure out who they are.
They are, PBK is the architect, the board's architect for Lodi High School.
I have questions on the architect coming up later. Then on item one six four oh one one three four, I believe that's Jerry Adams. He had two bills. Why was that?
The board's approved two Mr. Adams contracts, one for the standard security consulting, which buys the board the, the annual security drills at each of the sites with the follow-up reports.
Is that the fifty-seven hundred dollar one?
I'm sorry?
Is that the fifty-seven hundred dollar one? That's his, is?
I, I believe that's the standard, his standard contract.
He had a one for twenty-nine hundred. What was that for?
The board may recall that we had a separate consultant in years prior. I don't recall the exact contract amount, but it was in the neighborhood of seventy thousand dollars that did the site safety reports for each of our sites.
How many people?
That gentleman.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Khan.
That gentleman retired and decided to play golf and Mr. Adams offered his, his services to the board for that, that function.
So then for one month, we paid him over eight thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, for his services. How many people do we have on, on security then for, or did? Is it, is it, is it migrated down from, we had another person that retired, I guess, to play golf? So I'm confused.
There were two separate consultants that the board retained in prior years.
Why?
I'm, I'm not sure. The, the, both consultants were long-term consultants for the board.
Okay, I'm getting a little confused about that. And item one six four oh one two seven four. Seller, what was that for?
On the purchase order, it actually says the art seller.
Yeah, three seventy-seven, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Just curious.
So this is a Lodi High ASB purchase for a framed team jersey submitted by Nick Welton.
So Nick Welton, the framed team jersey?
These are ASB funds, Mr. Porter, so it looks like the ASB organization.
Right below that, one six four oh one two seven five, we paid four hundred and twenty-five dollars Wood Creek Quadda Club. What's that for? I don't think anybody's swimming right now. I was just curious. It's one six four oh one two seven five.
Lodi High Athletics, it is a tournament, Sierra Shootout, twenty-twenty Sierra Shootout.
So we are paying for sport tournaments that we don't know are going to happen yet?
I, I don't know, sir. It's, these are POs that are being cut, so clearly the site.
We need to talk to our directors about, because we have no idea what's going to be happening athletically. All right, next one is, and I'm going to, I'm boring you and I had to apologize. I have a whole list of engineering stuff, but I'll skip that because it comes up later. Then you have item one six four oh one five one two, and that's Monterey Trust. What is that about? I looked these.
Generally speaking, generally speaking, those are special ed settlements.
Oh, they are?
I don't know of any other reason to fund a deposit to Monterey Trust. They handle all of our special ed settlements. So once the board agrees. I'm sorry?
They handle like if the people want to purchase something or something like that, or is that what they do?
They actually, they become the, the trustee for the money's deposited for the student.
Yeah, that's good. Very good. Thank you. And I got one more and I'll leave you alone. Because I know that, oh, I got two more. I'm sorry. I got three. One six four oh one seven one one, the, the Gold Country Golf and Utility. So that's one six four oh one seven one one.
Delta Sierra Middle School.
They're playing golf now?
I think this is the golf cart, the golf cart lease for the, the school site.
That's twenty-eight hundred dollars for that. Okay, good to know. Then about, this other one was really interesting to me, one six four oh two one eight four.
Oh six. Just, may I just have the last four digits, Mr. Porter?
Not a problem. Two one eight four. I believe it's called Lego Education.
So Lodi Middle School purchase. Lego Mindstorms EV Core Set.
Yeah, that's, how much was that? Nine grand? Ninety-five hundred dollars?
Nine thousand five twenty-three eighty-four.
And that was approved by the principal and all that?
Whose ever budget it was, the.
PO order.
Resource it. So this is thirty-ten. It's a Title I purchase.
It's a Title I purchase?
Yes, sir.
Lego Education? I looked it up. It didn't seem to. Educating, but okay. And then my last one for you is, you want the last four digits, oh two two four, oh two two four. That's a world's finest chocolate. That was six thousand dollars.
I don't have a oh two two four.
I'm sorry, it's two 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 four.
Two 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 four. This again is a, an ASB purchase for Millswood Middle School. It looks like it's a fundraiser.
Oh, so they purchased the, and the kids went on fundraise and then gave the money back to us? Is that how it worked?
Either that or the kids go fundraise and then they deposit the money in their ASB account. And this is the evidence of the transaction to get the.
Thank you very much. This is, this is the kind of thing that we need to be doing, though, looking through everything that we spend from these school sites and so forth and find ways where we can save jobs and become leaner and better in terms of education. I'm done with A one. I don't know if anybody else has any questions.
I need a motion on this, Mr. Porter.
I need a motion on this, Mr. Porter.
Excuse me, Mr. Nava.
Excuse me? I, I can't hear.
We have a comment from the public.
Comment on this from the public?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. Or sorry, President Nava. Greetings, President Nava. Dr. Washer, members of the board, and Mr. Kanya. I'm Doug Zelkey and I teach music at Washington. And I did some scraping through the warrant reports myself. Sorry, Mr. Khan, I don't have one specific line to reference. I have just a collection of them. When I look through the warrant report, I see was Point Quest Education in this month, we're at And over the course of year to date, it's at 1.5 and some million. Now, I certainly don't question the need of Point Quest. I know it provides services to our special ed students that are extremely important, but what I want to know is, have we looked at a cost benefit analysis of trying to provide more of these services in-house rather than contracting them out?
Well, I'll let the special ed side answer that question. I don't, I don't think it's businesses' function to get involved in the program decisions, but certainly, I certainly do believe it's probably a wise recommendation.
All right, thank you. My motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Porter.
I'd like to second.
Second by Ms. McFarland to pass item A1 on Routine Agenda A. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item A2, Mr. Porter.
Yeah, I have a a question for Mr. Khan on, let me see, it's on the lease agreements. It's page one of Exhibit C, Section 21.2. So I'm on Exhibit C. Now, last week or two weeks ago, I questioned you about your sew ups or your wraps, I call them. And then if you read the paragraph there, it says inclusive of all bonding, retard and insurance costs. I thought the wraps covered that.
The wraps cover general liability, workers comp, builder's risk, and OPPI, which is professional insurance, the design side, and also the pollution issues. But each, each subcontractor and each general contractor also have to carry their, their automobile or their vehicle insurance costs and whatever else insurance you need to.
Later on in your bid on the Toke, the second gym, that was part of the bid was their insurance cost. It was included in the cost. So I'm, I'm confused because in the Toke new gym, you're including that in the $1 million, or excuse me, it's a $10 million deal. But I'm still confused on this insurance situation, but at one point you're telling me it's covered and at another point it's being factored into the bid.
I, I think what I'm trying to communicate is the OSEP does not cover the contractor's private vehicles. They, they still have, they still have to ensure their, the, the cost of driving around in their trucks and moving their trucks onto our, or their equipment onto our site.
That's included in their bid.
Work. Well, every contractor will include that in their, their bid, yes.
Okay, I have no more questions on A2 unless there's anybody out there that'd like to talk about A2. I move to pass.
The move, been moved by Mr. Porter.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. McFarland to approve item A2 on Routine Agenda A. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Porter, P A3.
Yeah. Yeah, this is A3, right?
Yes, sir.
And this is the funds that we're allowing to be transferred. Is that correct?
These are funds every, every year in order to affect the, the district's closeout. The board has annually allowed certain staff members, that would be Dr. Washer, myself, and the Senior Director Three Controller, April Warras, to, to transfer, to create inter-fund transfers between funds.
So this is A3 and then A4 is the same thing with cash. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so this is giving you three the power to control that money and the board will not have to vote on it. Is that correct?
No, board has to vote on any movement of money, especially inter-fund money. It just gives staff the authority to make the transfers so that they can meet deadlines.
So you mean after you move the money, then we vote on what you've already done?
Yes, sir.
So you've already done it and we're voting on. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I motioned, I'm, I'm not going to pass this. I'm going to say no to this. So somebody has to motion what are the passes?
Mr. Neely has moved to approve second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Heberly on item A3. Call vote, Mr. Freitas?
Aye.
Mr. Knackzak?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
No.
Mr. Heberly?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Freitas?
Aye.
And Mr. Nava, I, I didn't miss anybody, did I? Excuse me?
I'm a no. Mr. Porter's a no.
Yes, okay, I got you. I got you, Courtney. There's the, the A.
A4 is the same situation. We're giving them the power to.
Okay, hold on a second. Let's, let's pass A3. It passed by a vote of five to two. Okay, A4, Mr. Porter.
Same situation. We're allowing these three people to control the money without any, without any, any oversight at all. And I see this a lot in some of the overages we're having on constructions as well. So I, I'm just going to say, I can't, I can't approve this. So the board needs to look at it. They want to approve it.
May I have a, a motion on this, please? Okay, four.
We have a public comment on this item.
Public comment? Who has a public comment? Excuse me?
Michelle Orban.
All right, Michelle, shoot, let's go.
Thank you, President Nava. Yes, we have the same concerns, especially after listening to school services today and how money will be needed to be moved from one account to another. We are concerned with, as we had the resolution for COVID. We know that generally speaking, these A3 and A4 are normally done throughout the year. I think it's once a year that they do it. But as we look at some of the COVID money and some of the moving from one account to another, as was suggested possibly happening from school services, we would hope that there would be more oversight in moving money, especially cash, before it was done. Our point is just to bring our attention. We'd like to see it have approval by the board and the board examining that before it is automatically done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. President, may I comment?
You bet, Mr. Khan.
These, these items have been annually a matter of convenience for the board as well as for staff. If the board were to go away from this practice, then it would have to make itself available on short notice to approve these items so that staff can submit the necessary reports to county on, on the requisite timelines.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. I need a motion, I need a motion on A4, please. Mr. Neely, I move to approve A4.
Connected second.
Second by Connectzak. Voice vote, Mr. Neely.
Aye.
Mr. Porter. No. Mr. Mr. Heberly?
Yes.
Mr. Freitas?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
No.
Gary, you vote?
Aye.
Connectzak? Okay, okay. The vote is passes five to two on A4. Mr. Porter, A5?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Khan.
Yes, okay, sir.
There was a change order. I believe the original bid was at $971,000. And then we had a $73,000 change order and a $41,000 change order. Is that correct?
That's correct. I apologize. I don't have the background on this. This is part of the board's Prop 39 grant money. That's used to retrofit both HVACs and lighting, but I, I can get the background and, and provide that information at a later.
I, I'm struggling that they make a bid and this happens all the time. And it goes up no matter, across the board. And then we have, we just sit here, we see it, we vote on it. And there's no oversight. And we have no idea what happened with over $100,000. So I'm struggling because I'm seeing this across the board. We'll see it come up later with the item A6 where, again, we just tremendous increases in, in amounts of money that we originally had set aside. So I struggle that we don't have oversight on our construction. I see it across, it happens too much. I think, Mr. Nava, you're looking for a motion to passes.
Yes, I am.
Vote approved, Neely.
Is that A5? I need a second.
Second.
Connected.
Second, I can exit. All right, voice vote, Mr. Heberly?
Yes.
Ms. Knackzak?
Aye.
Mr. Farland?
Aye.
Mr. Porter?
No.
Mr. Freitas?
Aye.
Mr. Neely?
Aye.
And I, okay, passes six to one. Item A6 Contracts, Mr. Porter.
I think the boards love me tonight, aren't they?
No, it's not. Mr. Porter, I have just a suggestion. I think these are great to be brought up publicly. But if you would contact Mr. Khan, then you pull out the ones that you have publicly. So the public will know. I would appreciate that.
Well, that's my whole point of tonight is to bring them up publicly and show off. Constantly approving things that have been under budgeted.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm, what I'm saying is like, for example, if A1 on the warrant reports, you know, we had several of them and we spent 15 minutes on, if you ask Mr. Khan, what are those for? And the ones that you don't approve, bring them up publicly so the public will know. And that would, that would be helpful.
All right, Mr. Nava, but again, I'm, I'm trying to do what's best for our kids.
Hey, whatever it is, thank you. Okay, six.
Okay, I'm looking at these and again, we have new amendments. The one that sticks out the most is number one and number three. We've budgeted for $200,000. We're now paying $300,000 for legal fees. And that's just one of our legal insulpts. Then item three, look down below where the budgeted amount was 20,000. The new amendment was 140,000. This gets into the architects and so forth. And it's $160,000. That shows me incompetence.
Mr. President, if I may, on number three.
Mr. Khan?
The original $20,000 budget was, we needed assistance figuring out where these lunch shelters could go. There may not seem like it, but they are incredibly complicated items. If you put them within 20 feet of a building, then they have to be wired with fire alarms and fire sprinklers and, and they have to be certain distance from where the food is served. And then if you put them in certain places, you have to change the path of travel, which takes a $70,000 lunch shelter up to 400,000. We needed assistance from the architect to actually walk the sites and recommend locations that would keep the cost of these, or these measure U projects down. One example is Washington Elementary. We had to actually go back to site staff and request that they choose a different project because we could not make a lunch shelter functionally work on their footprint. So the original 20,000 was just to locate positions for the lunch shelters where they would not, would not afford a huge increase in cost with ADA pass to travel and restroom retrofits and fire sprinkler connections. And then the 140,000 is for the design of three, but no longer four lunch shelters.
Okay, but my point in all this, Mr. Khan, tonight, and it's kind of grandiose, is things are done without our input and then we have to vote on. They're already done. So what is our role here? The money's already spent.
If I, if, if I may say, Mr. Porter, the, the 20,000 was approved earlier by the board and the lunch shelters have been approved by the board under fund, under measure U.
Yeah, but the 140 was then spent thereafter. I mean, we're always after the fact. That's kind of my point. Now, Mr. Nava, you have a time situation, so you can.
No, I don't have time situation. I just want you to just, whatever you need. It's numbered up to the public. That's fine.
I know. I'm just, just curious. What are we here for? If we keep just saying yes to things that have already changed.
Yeah, but I understand you, Mr. Porter. Here's my point. My point is to get all these, these questions to Mr. Khan before our meeting and then you bring out the questions that are, that you don't agree and you, you, you want to, you want the public to know about them. And that's better than doing, than doing this.
All right, Mr. Nava, I appreciate your advice. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Freitas?
I, I agree with Mr. Porter. You know, we're all here for our kids and this seems to be one of the tough decisions that we're just going to have to make. And 120,000, whether it's for measure U or not, I think saves several employees in the district. So I cannot approve number three. So I would move to modify A6 to approve items one and two only. I make that motion.
I would, before we, before we take a second on that, I'd like to weigh in on number three. I think it's not that it needs to be amended by $140,000. It's that the company that we chose to go with has a current value of 20,000 and then added 140 when clearly when there were questions with walking this, making these decisions. I don't think anybody would disagree with Mr., with Mr. Khan and the fact that this was a very difficult, they were difficult projects in order to work them out. I think where the problem enters is the assessment of 20,000 and then the whopping jump it up by 140. That's my concern, that maybe the company who's bidding on is, is undermining the cost of the project. And then once we've awarded it and we're, we're, for lack of a better word, backdoored. And it feels like that. That's not that it's accurate, but that's the way it's feeling to me.
I have a motion with a modification without a second.
A second.
All right, Dr. Washer?
Yes, Mr. Nava, I would, if we could ask Mr. Khan what this does to the project and the contract that we currently have.
Mr. Khan? Mr. Khan?
I think he's in favor of it by his silence.
I'm, hello?
Mr. Khan? Go ahead.
I'm speaking. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
The board can certainly reject. The board can certainly reject this, this item. That's the board's discretion, but this is a Measure U-approved list of projects, these three lunch shelters. So they are in effect rejecting the lunch shelters as well.
And whether it's, Mr. President, whether it's Measure U or not, I see that we're gonna spend a lot of money on our campuses, whether it's for entries or, or other facilities. And just because it's Measure U doesn't mean that we have to be not careful in how we spend our money. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that this might be one of the things. Also, you know, we received quite a few emails about a six hundred thousand dollar fire road, which, you know, in my head, I, I cannot figure out. And I'd like to have that put back on the agenda and figure out if there's some other alternatives than this district spending six hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, people trust us with enacting Measure U, and, you know, I, I have some concerns about this spending, so I have a motion.
Mr. Freitas, I do have concerns also, but these, these things are essential for what we voted Measure U for, and we're helping our students, especially the minority kids that qualifies for the lunch drops and all that kind of stuff. So I, I, I agree with you that the spending maybe is, is too much, but again, it's a needed thing that Measure U, actually, we approve Measure U for those, those plans.
Mr. Nav.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Heberly here.
Yes, Mr. Heberly.
I think what we can do is we have to follow through with the original motion that's on the table, and then if somebody wants to bring up number three, they can make a motion to approve number three separately if they want.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Heberly. Dr. Washer, would you read that motion for us, so we can, you have it for us?
Valerie's gonna read it.
Okay, thank you.
The motion was to approve the contract agenda of May nineteenth, twenty twenty, with the exception of item number three.
And I got a second on that by Mr. Porter. Mr. Mr. Freitas made the motion, Mr. Porter, second. A question, Mr. Neely.
Yeah, a point of clarification here. If this motion is rejected, the default is, is that we vote on all three at one time, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Comments from the public?
Go ahead, Michelle. Thank you. With all due respect, and thank you, Board, for bringing this up. These are questions that were asked with item number one and the legal services and the increase in legal services for the contracts and negotiations for both with Lea and CSDA. You know, we understand that two years ago, there was a feeling that we, to get things done at the bargaining table, the board felt at that time there needed to be an intermediary to get things moving. Well, when we're looking at these kinds of dollar amounts and negotiations and bargaining, we would hope that maybe we can cut out the middleman for some of this, and we can bargain and get things moving without the extra expense of, I believe, five hundred dollars an hour for the attorney to be there. Just our take on that, we haven't always had an attorney at the time. With regards to the security on number two, the additional thirty thousand dollars, the amendment, how much length of time are we looking at that those wind walkers had to increase for thirty-five thousand dollars or more? Does Mr. Khan, Mr. Khan, do you have any idea on length of time?
Mr. Khan.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So typically, a wind walker contract is just on average about fifteen hundred dollars a week. So the reason we, we require their services is because as we change out these fire alarms, the, the sites are, in essence, unprotected from any type of alarm or fire that would normal, or smoke that would normally trigger an alarm.
Okay, so for both Needham then and Lawrence, I believe, were the two schools there, we're looking at extended periods of time than what we had anticipated?
No, well, for the Needham Elementary School project, we, the, the decision was made to actually make the fire alarm system in the old wings that will remain uniform with the new one. And then the Lawrence project, the, the fire alarms have been incredibly expensive, and
Right.
A lot of it, a lot of it has to do with code changes, where Bear Creek was a good example. Lawrence is, is also a good example, where the old building didn't allow the design to occur under the new code. So adjustments had to be made. There are also new provisions in the code. You can no longer drill through joists or any type of glue lamb structural support, which forces, you know, further design and, and further rerouting of the, the low voltage wires.
Okay, so the, the amount of time needed to do the projects was extended due to, you know, moving it up the code that we didn't expect.
Yes, and then also, maybe interested that the, the, the fire overwatch only occurs when there are no site on staff, so that's overnight and on weekends and holidays.
Right, okay. Again, and with the number three, the Measure U monies, you know, I guess we'd like to go back and see what was originally budgeted for structures, because I know every teacher right now is in a panic over, are we gonna have hand washing stations? Are we gonna have the proper PPO? We're not saying to get rid of, you know, shade structures, but, you know, it seems like this is a big jump from what the original cost was when we're looking at safety measures for things that we had no idea were on the horizon back then. Thank you for your time.
Well, Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Khan.
The cost of the lunch shelters, the funds used to support those cannot be used for PP or hand, or a hand sanitizer or anything related to COVID. These lunch shelters were not, they're not a staff decision, they were what the site requested. The sites requested during their Measure U programming meetings. I, I can concur with all the comments today, they are incredibly expensive. Be most, most likely because they, they will cause additional upgrades to the site, some of which are desperately needed, bathroom upgraded, upgrades and ADA pass to travel, but absent of doing them, then we won't incur that cost in the Measure U program. But it is, at the end of the day, it is what the sites requested for their, their schools.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. We have a motion on the floor to modify this A6 on the Mr. Mr. Freitas' motion, Mr. Porter, second. All in favor, check, let's go, voice vote, Ms. McFarland. Ms. McFarland.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Connect Sec.
No.
Mr. Neely. Mr. Heberly.
No.
Mr. Nav, no. Motion, motion fails four to three. All right, can I hear a motion on A6 for contracts?
Mr. Nav.
Mr. Heberly.
I make a motion, we approve item A6, please.
Second, Neely.
And second by, motion by Mr. Heberly, second by Mr. Neely to approve A6 contract list. Mr. Freitas.
No.
Mr. Porter.
No.
Ms. McFarland.
Yes.
Mr. Connect Sec.
Yes.
Mr. Neely.
Yeah.
Mr. Heberly.
Yes.
Now, yes, vote, motion carries five to two. A7, Mr. Porter.
Yes. Scroll down to the very last page. Mr. Khan. Let's see. At the last page, the page before, I hear. We're gonna, budget revisions, two-two-oh-nine, put on one. Increased parking lot safety improvement. Westwood project budget, transfer of funds allocated, five hundred thousand dollars. I believe that we are adding a new fence to the JSC building, is that correct?
That's correct, that's before the board denied as well.
So we're building a new fence for safety around, so it's four oh nine point oh one, I'm sorry. The JESC fence budget. You said it costs three hundred thousand, back up top, I saw five hundred thousand, so a little confusion about that. That's coming out of our capital outlay fund. This is a brand-new security fence for the ESD Center?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a real hard time with this. This is probably what led up to all the other things, that we're building a fence around the ESD Center to protect. I'm all for safety, but we don't, you know, it's students first. And we're dropping three hundred grand or possibly five hundred grand to build a fence around one of the most secure buildings, if not the most secure building in our school district. So I struggle with this expenditure. I'll be a hard no on this. I think the board needs to look at how we're spending money, which is a point of what I did tonight, because we are the stewards for what's gonna be happening in the next couple of years on how money is spent. Three hundred grand for a budget around that building is a waste.
Mr. Khan, would you care to comment on that?
Yes, sir, I would agree with Mr. Porter that the ESC is, is, from the outside envelope, inside is an extremely secure building with good access control, camera systems. The cabinet deliberated on this over several cabinet meetings, and then provided direction to, to move forward. The, the motivation behind this is, is we do have a severe homeless problem in the area of the ESC, and we had several staff encounters with homeless people right outside doors. There were, there was one instance, or, or maybe two, but I think it was the same individual that ascended the stairs inside the quad and was sleeping when one of our staff members tried to leave late at night. We have, throughout the course of the year, any one of the departments housed in the ESC can have both women and, and male staff members working late into the night and then leaving the secure environment of the building and, and, you know, the potential to engage in, with, with a homeless person is, seems to be increasing daily in, in this area of town.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. I hear a motion on A7.
Mr. Nav, we have comments from the public.
I'm sorry, comments from the public?
We have, Michelle, we're going. Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you, Valerie. President Nav to Mr. Khan. Can you explain, man, maybe I'm reading this document wrong. I, oh, I don't, it isn't numbered. I, under the budget revisions, it says increased parking lot safety improvement at Westwood project budget to reflect transfer. So we're moving five hundred and fifty thousand from Westwood's project to the ESC. Am I reading that right?
No, Michelle, I'm sorry, it's, you're moving five hundred and fifty thousand oh one eight from within Fund Twenty-two, Resource zero 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 to the Westwood Projects Resource zero eight five six. It's an internal, it's an internal fund transfer.
Okay, so that has nothing to do then with the three hundred thousand for the fence around ESC?
Absolutely not, and in fact, they're, they're two different funds that are engaged here.
Okay, that's, I, I got confused on that. Well, I'll, with all due respect to the safety of my fellow employees at ESC, myself, I, I don't know any teacher at any site that has not happened upon people breaking into our school sites when we work late at night, out, coming across people that are doing inappropriate things on school campuses, hopping fences, being at your back door, you know, that, not saying that, you know, it's okay for that, but right now, making that expenditure for a fence around ESC where I, I know most are gone at night, and from talking to another colleague, if they are the last ones, then typically the custodian would escort them out. It seems like a very huge expense when, as far as I know, none of the school parking lots are, well, one, but it has to be manually closed. So will this parking lot, will it be a key entry like MNO? And will all employees be able then to enter? Because I have teachers right now sitting in school parking lots. Actually, one that spoke tonight has been harassed by the police about using the Wi-Fi of our school and our school district office in order to upload and download, because they've expired all of their data on their data plan. So is this gonna keep people like employees from pulling up to the parking lot and using the Wi-Fi system at ESC? Is it going to be a gate that is a coded gate where you have to have a code? Or is everyone's badge gonna get them in and out of that parking lot?
Their badge, Michelle.
Mr. Khan.
The, the, the design is for badge use.
Okay, thank you.
At two entry points.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Freitas.
You know, I, I am first about employee safety, and I, I share with the concerns, but, you know, to have one contact and, and for it to be not even a car being broken into, this seems like quite a significant amount to be spending, and, and especially, like I said, with what we're facing. So I, I found the building to be very secure. In fact, many times, I can't get into the building, even when I, I come there for district business. So I, I, I'm gonna be a hard no on this. I can't approve this. Thank you.
I need a motion.
A motion not to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Porter not to approve, second by Mr. Freitas.
Mr. Nav, Mr. Neely, I have a question.
Mr. Neely.
Mr. Nav, I mean, Mr. Khan. Has this been brought before the board a resolution?
It has not, no, sir.
All right. Then would the board have to approve this resolution before this happened?
The board has approved resolutions in, as an after fact. This is, this, I think can be approved on the requisition basis as well, but it has not been brought as a resolution. If the board would prefer, we can pull this item and rediscuss it in cabinet, and then if cabinet wishes to move forward, then we can, we can bring back a resolution.
What we could do possibly is to Uh, what we could do possibly is to, uh, modify. Instead of just rejecting this and getting, getting this budget resolution, getting, getting this done, is bring back that specific item. So approve this minus that change. Would that be possible?
Approve less the, uh, E S C's fencing. That'd be certainly possible, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion. Have a motion. Have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Question, question, Mr. Freitas.
Yes, Mr. Nava.
Yes. Question.
No, I, I wouldn't have a problem with, uh, Mr. Neely's suggestion.
Okay, any other questions? They have a motion on?
I.
We'll ask you to amend that motion.
We need to amend the motion.
Okay, I, let's vote on this one first and then we can, if it passes or doesn't pass, we can amend it. We, we have a motion on the floor right now, and that motion is not to approve A six. I mean, uh, A seven, is it? Yes, A seven. Uh, Mr. Freitas.
No.
Okay.
Yes, I'm voting in favor of not approving the item, so yes.
Yes, Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Ms. McFarland.
Yes.
Mr. Knackset.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Neely.
I don't know. This is Nava, I don't know what we're voting on at this point. Are we voting to?
Okay, we're voting to drop, to drop, not, not to build a fence.
No, you're, you're voting on the whole thing.
That's right, that's what I thought.
Wait a minute.
What is the whole thing?
We had a motion on the floor. It was decadent. We need to vote on that motion.
And that motion right now is A seven.
They're voting.
We're voting on A seven.
Mr. Nava, may I make a suggestion to streamline?
Yes. Mr. Heberly.
If the person who made the motion would withdraw their current motion and make a new motion, um, approving this item with the exception of the E S C fence. I think I would make that motion.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Heberly. Uh, Mr. Freitas, I, or Mr. Freitas, you made the motion.
Um, I made the motion. Mr. Freitas seconded.
Okay, Mr. Porter, you made the motion and then Mr. Uh, would you care to change on that?
I said I would change the motion minus the budget for the fence. Yes.
Okay, all right, and it's been seconded?
So I'll second that.
Okay, now, let me just see, let me just see if I'm, I'm proper on this because we do, did have a motion on all, but we're going to, uh, amend that motion. In other words, here's my point. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Washer. We made a motion already on A seven to, uh, and, and Mr. Porter made not to pass it and Mr. Freitas seconded, and we have some votes on this. Okay, am I correct on doing this?
You, you started voting on the original motion, but then the voting stopped, so.
Yes, we haven't finished voting yet, so.
Voting on the first motion.
Okay, so I want to vote on the first motion and then see what happens on it. Ms. McFarland.
I think that folks might have been confused on what they were voting for.
Yes.
I agree. That's why I think we should go with the streamlined version where we remove the money for the fence. And everybody knows what we're voting on. I agree there was some confusion.
Yeah, I agree that, but we do have a motion. And I want to do proper.
Brought.
Okay, then I didn't have a, nobody withdrew it. They just wanted to change it. We drew the motion and then make the other motion. That would, that would help. Mr. Porter.
I am motioning that we withdraw my motion.
Okay, all right. Mr. Freitas.
Second.
Okay, so, okay, it's been moved and seconded to withdraw the motion of A seven. All in favor, uh, Mr. Freitas.
Hi.
Mr. Porter.
Hi.
Mr. Farland.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Knackset.
Hi.
Mr. Neely.
Yeah.
Mr. Heberly.
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero. All right, now we go through this.
That we pass A seven minus four, zero, zero, nine point one, zero, one, the money for the E S C building or fence.
Fence. Are you here a second?
I'll second.
All right, been, a motion has been made by Mr. Porter to adopt this, this chain, this adopted budget for the exception of the fence around the, uh, administrative building. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Been seconded by Mr. Freitas.
Freitas.
Okay, all right, then we'll have, uh, a, a vote from the board. Mr. Freitas.
Hi.
Mr. Porter.
Hi.
Mr. Farland.
Hi.
Mr. Knackset.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Neely.
Yeah.
Mr. Heberly.
Yes.
And motion carries seven, zero. All right, we have A, eight, uh, Michelle Oregon.
I didn't. Oh, yes, A, eight. I'm so sorry. Thank you, President Nava. I turned my page over. Um, with regards to the quarterly report of the Williams Act, um, did, was this just regarding, um, McNair High School again? Can I ask?
Uh, this, Mr. Khan, are you?
Mr. Palmquist. Mr. Palmquist.
All right, Mr. Palmquist, is he here?
So one of our questions was with regards to students being able to access curriculum. We found that that, um, was, uh, we had a lot of complaints that students couldn't access the curriculum. So we found that hard to, uh, believe that there were no complaints, um, that were lodged um, against, uh, students having access because teachers were calling all the time about not being able to have access to curriculum the first few weeks of the pandemic. So maybe it was a different timeframe or maybe it was just McNair, but, um, we questioned that zero and where those complaints then are lodged. Cause I had lots of teachers complaining their students did not have access. Um, we have since started to, um, improve access with the hotspot, but we questioned if that really was a zero.
President Nava.
Yes.
I am here. Uh, President.
Yes, Mr. Palmquist.
If I may.
You may.
Yes, this, this is the, um, this is the report filed from Enrique Avalos, the district's, uh, uniform complaint, uh, officer. And these are, these are based on the formal written complaints that came through his office. So it is no doubt people called or expressed concern. Um, these, this is his report on, for the, the quarter and the period ending, you know, last, I think halfway through April, uh, any that he received, um, under, under that guideline. So that would be a formal written complaint that made it to his office. So he's reporting that he received none. Now, to, to Ms. Oregon's point, um, certainly there's been great conversation. There has been, um, concerns raised and, and maybe addressed, but these are the formal written complaints that have made it to, uh, Enrique Avalos. And so he is reporting on that.
Thank you, Mr. Palmquist.
For Mr. Palmquist, uh, through Mr. Nava, if I may. If a teacher is calling the, the school district to complain that the student doesn't have access or their, their, their parents are calling the school district, they had to report it to Enrique in order for it to appear on this report. Is that correct?
No, if, if they submitted a formal written complaint, um, or, uh, they could have done that at, at the school and that would have been forwarded to Mr. Avalos. Um, any, any formal written complaint, um, would go to Mr. Avalos. It doesn't have to be submitted directly to him, although it certainly could be. Um, but any formal written complaint that was submitted would go to Mr. Avalos, whether it was submitted to the site or directly to him.
So if the teachers were calling the principal and telling them, um, my five parents still can't get on, they have no access, um, to the curriculum via, when they tell that to their principal, is their principal then supposed to, um, lodge that complaint with Enrique?
No. My, my understanding, uh, we would have to, uh, you know, and I, and I can, um, do some more research with Enrique. It is on formal written complaints. Not necessarily all concerns or complaints that are expressed. So certainly if they submitted a, a complaint in writing or a formal complaint, uh, to their principal, then yes, certainly that would be, um, you know, addressed in that manner. A call, I do not know if that, that meets the standard for Williams and uniform complaint.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, board, item A eight.
Vote for it.
Mr. Neely has voted, uh, to approve item A.
Second.
Second by Ms. McFarland. Um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Uh, motion carries seven, zero.
Mr. Nava.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Heberly, I have a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
I, I've looked into the, uh, Williams Act settlement, uh, complaints, uh, quite a bit. And, and it is true that there is a specific form, um, and process that needs to be filed in writing by the individual or individuals of something that they see. If it, if it is a verbal, it does not, from what I've looked at, it does not comply with a uniform, uh, complaint process that is part of the policy of that. So if, if somebody wants to do a complaint, they do have to do it in the proper written manner.
Thank you, Mr. Heberly. Thank you for the information on that. You're right. Uh, okay, other action items. Item A oh, one, one, declaration of need for fully qualified educators. Mr. McMillan. Mr. McIllicane, I'm sorry. It's getting late.
Mr. Nava.
That's sorry.
Mr. Nava, this is. Mr. Nava.
Yes, sir.
This is a required item. It's, uh, something that we, uh, submit, uh, yearly. And so we just need to send it in. So if we need to hire people on, uh, different permits in various areas, we have it on file at the state.
May, may I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Mr. Knackset, move to approve. Who was second?
Heberly.
Mr. Heberly, thank you, Ron. Second the motion to approve this declaration of needs for fully qualified educators. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries seven, zero. Okay, we have the other item, provisional internship permit and approval. I think Mr. McMillan is the same thing as, same process, uh, for this one.
Correct. We need to disapprove of this person to be able to start.
Okay, thank you, sir. I need a motion. Uh, Mr. Mr. Heberly?
Yes, Heberly, motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Mr. Knackset.
Um, Mr. Knackset, second to approve the provisional internship permits and approval. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Okay, motion carries seven, zero. Personnel matters. Approval of certificated classified personnel matters. Uh, Mr. McMillan.
Excuse me, I have a comment from the public.
Uh, comment from the public on personnel matters?
Yeah, that would be Michelle Oregon.
Okay, Michelle.
I'm sorry, President Nava. My, um, I, my item to pull was, uh, zero, A, one, I dash one, the declaration for need for qualified employees, um, which was already voted on. We had a couple of questions since we didn't have a job fair and how we were recruiting. We know that some of our fellow districts did, um, virtual job fairs and in requesting how many new teachers we thought that we would be looking for or how many openings, um, was told just a few. And when we saw this number at a hundred and thirty, we were quite shocked. So we'd like, uh, just to go on record as to, hopefully we can set up something virtually since our fellow districts have already done some job fairs. We know we had one planned, but pandemic hit. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, personnel matters. Approval of certificate and classified personnel. Do we have a motion on that?
Vote for it.
Mr. Neely moved a second by.
I'll second Mr. Porter.
Mr. Porter to approve personnel matters. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries seven, zero. Communications, okay? We have communications from student representatives. They're probably gone. Anybody here, anybody here, student representatives? Okay, comments from employee group representatives?
Uh, Mr. Nava, we have Michelle Oregon, Deborah Ladwig, and Dean Blount.
All right, let's get Michelle first.
Oh, thank you, Ms. President Nava. You're, you're tired of hearing from me, however, my message.
No, no, I'm not tired. I'm just plain tired.
Believe me, it's late and I'm ready for dinner. So, so it is true that alone we can do so little, but together we can do so much. And I want to first thank, um, all of our, um, C S E A classified employees, um, this week, celebrating the jobs that they do to help us reach students and teach us. Um, even while we were, our distance learning at home, they are there, um, you know, on task force meetings, helping to change report cards. And, you know, secretaries answering phone calls from home. Custodians that are still keeping our sites, uh, clean. Paris and Paws and bilingual translators, our crossing guards, our food service. We want to give them a huge thank you for the service they do for our students and our district. And although we, um, cannot physically or even visually, um, uh, shake our, um, baton for them and tell them what a wonderful job, we want to say thank you, um, for how they do support our students in this pandemic time. Um, again, uh, tonight, um, we had asked, um, Dr. Washer. Um, it has been expressed by my members that they would appreciate seeing that the board members are present. Um, tonight, we definitely have heard all of you, but as we are doing distance learning remotely with our students, we find that it is reassuring and, um, puts us at ease when we can see our students. Um, asked my preschool student, my preschool teachers, um, in Gen Ed who are not allowed to see their students, how stressful that is. So maybe going forward, that is something that we can work on. I know bandwidth is an issue. Guess what? That's what every teacher is dealing with every day. So maybe the platform using Zoom or something where you can be seen and we can see that you're there with us, um, just an ask. Um, and going forward with the Keenan videos and professional development, um, there has been asked about if there is any way to change the July first date to move it up to June. Um, we know that we still are in need of hotspot for some of our students. However, I am getting daily requests now from teachers. Um, I seriously had a teacher that was roused by the Lodi police, I believe, twice now by sitting in front of a school, just, uh, school to use the Wi-Fi to upload, um, and communicate. And she was, the last time she was reading a story to her students, uh, via Zoom. And so if there's any, um, way that we can get our teachers who are in desperate need and when I hear that they are spending now over two hundred dollars to increase their data plans on some, um, of the salaries that they get, that would certainly be helpful. Um, and is certainly sad. Um, and is certainly sad that, um, you know, they're in those situations. Um, we appreciate, um, that, um, the parking lots are available for us to access, um, in need be. Um, as we go forward with the start of the new school year and the winding down of the school year. We really ask that everybody pay very close attention to the safety. We understand that people are very stressed. We understand that we are getting mixed messages and social distancing. Wearing masks, whether or not there's protective wear. We want both our classified employees safe. We also want our teachers safe in doing the jobs that they have to do. Um, thank you for the reassurance to Dr. Washer this week in, uh, making sure that teachers are not having to rush in. And try to elbow each other to get cumes and done, and that can be done later. It's setting those priorities, but it's having an open dialogue and a discussion so that we know what is happening daily in teachers' lives. I can't express to you, um, when a member calls telling me that they have COVID. Or telling me that they have volunteered outside a school site and the student was running a fever. And now they're being tested for COVID. We just don't know the circumstances and we want to keep everybody safe. When I started out months ago talking about this, saying I wanted to see everyone safe on the flip side of this. We're almost to the end and I really do want to see everyone safe, just as I'm sure the, the school board members, our cabinet. And our, um, bosses, our administrators on site do. But we do have people that are immune compromised and can't go. And yet I am getting call after tearful call about people who feel they are being pressured to come to do this job or that job. And it just is not good. So I would ask everyone to be, please be considerate of those who don't necessarily go to the celebrations. Or the drive is, or whatever schools are planning. We have not heard of any specifics, but teachers are slowly getting messages and they're scared. And I don't think they're being, everyone's being included in the discussions. And some of those people that are most fragile are being left out. Something also that is very worrisome that has been brought to my attention this week and we thought it was solved on Saturday. With people receiving phone calls is many of our teachers, um, have their children on IDAs. Um, some of them at the school sites that they teach at, some of them at the school sites that are right by where they teach. Um, and we know that this definitely makes a happier employee and usually one that stays longer at work. Not that I'm saying that they should, but there was, there has been a huge denial of staff IDAs. And I have five members that still have not heard that their IDA has been accepted. They received letters that they were denied. So it has been past precedent that staff members, teachers, um, were able to have IDAs for their students. We'd like to understand why the change of process and hope that this can be worked out by the end of this week. Where everybody knows where their students will be. We are concerned with the start of the school year and, um, after listening to school services. We are, um, extremely worried about two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty-two. However, I believe I have fifteen hundred members strong that are ready to roll up their sleeves. Minus our thirty-six retirees that are ready to go to work and look at things that we can cut. That we can, you know, cinch our belts in a little tighter. We, again, want us to do what's best for students. And of course, part of that is looking at what's best, excuse me, people and not necessarily programs. Let us not hold the sacred towels that we've had in the past and really ask the hard, tough questions. Some of which we've asked tonight so that we can make this more efficient for all of our students. And we can be the district that is that destination that someone referred to as real estate agents used to refer to Lodi Unified as. We wish, we have a couple more retirees on tonight's personnel agenda item and we, we wish them well. And they're new and hope that they are healthy going out. Um, we look forward to, um, coming to the table and bargaining, um, very shortly with you. Um, thank you for your indulgence in answering questions tonight. Again, with fifteen hundred members, there are lots of questions that my members have. Thank you for your time tonight. Stay safe.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay. Valerie, Valerie?
Yeah.
Next?
Uh, that would be Deborah Ladwig.
Deborah, you got the floor, Deborah?
Thank you. Um, you can hear me, yes?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Good evening, President Nava, members of the board and Superintendent Washer. I just wanted you to know that I did stay till the end. I have a couple, just a couple of things. I want to thank Michelle for her kind words. Um, yes, this is Classified School Employee Week. So, um, we are, uh, talking with our members and making sure that everyone knows that, uh, they are appreciated. Unfortunately, we aren't able to have our big, uh, celebration that we usually do. Um, we're hoping that we'll be able to do something when, you know, times change. We can all gather in, gather in a group and we can celebrate each other. Um, I want to have a special thank you to, uh, Board Member Ron Freitas. Who sent us a, um, comment of well wishes on Sunday as, as CSCW kickoff. And we really appreciated that. So thank you, uh, Board Member Ron Freitas. Um, let's see here. Uh, let's see. Um, I wanted to, I did see the information tonight and listen to the information tonight about the plans to reopen school. And I see that there are task forces. Um, but it did seem that classifieds employees were missing. You indicated that there was a registrar at the high school level and, um, perhaps someone from technology. But there weren't any other classified representatives. And some of the things that you want to talk about, um, in your plans moving forward. As you had put in your presentation tonight, the things about, um, cleaning classrooms, food service, transportation. Those are all things that we are very aware of and very familiar with and, um, would love to be able to be part of the solution or the new plan. Um, whatever it might be. Um, I do want to thank, uh, you, the board, for your, uh, willingness to continue to negotiate with us. We are looking forward to this Friday. Hopefully it will be our, uh, final day for the COVID nineteen MOU. And we will get those things, um, settled. Because this is the last scheduled meeting for, um, May and school will be over in another week or so. Thank you for your leadership and your time. This has been a very trying time. Um, we have been in ever-changing, um, situations. We've had lots of issues that have come up. And, um, we have been able to, uh, reach you, the school board members, when we had questions, when we had concerns, when we had issues. You have listened to us and we appreciate that. Um, moving forward, we know that there will be more issues. We will have more concerns. And there will be more things that we can, uh, work better on. And we look forward and welcome the opportunity to work better. Because CSEA, classified school employees always want what's best for the students of our community. And thank you very much for your service this evening and we are running very late. So good evening.
Good evening, Deborah. Thank you. Valerie, anybody else?
Mr. Nava, we have Dean Blount representing Lodi People Personnel Association.
Okay, Dean?
Yes, thank you, President Nava, Dr. Washer, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Um, I'd like to speak to you tonight about, uh, the proposal to reduce the school-aged family education program or the SAFE program you discussed earlier. Uh, it's a budget item of about nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We're talking about cutting it down to three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, in this unprecedented times of projected bu- budget reductions, I assume that when LPPA comes to the negotiating table, we're going to be talking about a reduction. Uh, at, at the very least, a stagnation of our, of our salary. Um, but very likely we're going to be talking about a percentage reduction or staffing reductions, or if it's anything like our, uh, downturn in two thousand eight, two thousand ten. We're going to be looking at days of service as well. Uh, the SAFE program provides a duplication of services that's provided by our, can be provided by our school counselors. And our school psychologists. Nearly one million dollars is what we're talking about. And that can be saved by utilizing the services of your current LUSD employees to serve the social and emotional needs of our students. I'd encourage you to reconsider the entire SAFE contract and, um, and provide these services in-house at a tremendous savings. I know that these are unprecedented times. Just utilize the staff that you're paying for and spend the amount on outside agencies. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Susan. Any other, uh, comments from the employee representatives?
No further comments.
Okay, being done. Then we have a board advisory committee report. Any?
Mr. Nava, I would just like to report on the, um, charter surrender. They would just like to thank, uh, and the district for approving their charter. And I've had a couple of conversations and we will be meeting via Zoom meeting in June to go over, um, how we will proceed with the next calendar year. But once again, they just wanted to express their thank you in approving their charter.
Perfect. Thank you, Susan. Uh, any other, uh, reports?
Mr. Nava?
Yes.
Uh, this is Kathy, just a couple, just a couple of comments. Couple of comments quickly. Uh, first of all, I want to let board know that, uh, we as staff are looking at vacant positions very carefully. Uh, because of the budget times that we're in. There are three positions currently vacant at the district office that we are holding off on. Um, one is, uh, a administrative position in the curriculum department. Uh, one is, um, a teacher of special assignment in the curriculum department. And one is a, um, a position in the superintendent's office. We are not, uh, advertising those at this time. Uh, we're going to wait, either in a wait and see mode on those three. Um, and there will probably be more, uh, that we do that with as well. I also want to let board and the public know that we will be, um, having budget advisory committees. We've done this in the past when we've had, uh, difficult budget times. So we will structure something, um, that will include all of our stakeholders. As we work through this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Washer, for the info. Any other things? I, I need a motion to adjourn if we, I know somebody left. Can we stay till eleven?
I motion to adjourn.
Been moved by Mr. Porter to adjourn. May I have a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Neely, second? I like that, yeah. It's all in favor? Yes, I.
Aye.
I guess.
Uh, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. I will see you in closed session on the twenty-sixth at five PM. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for, thank you for expressing all your good stuff.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy.